All right, I have one o'clock, Mayor.
Me too. Okay, we will call to order the, excuse me, special meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, February 8. If the clerk would call the roll, please.
Council members Kozlowski.
Here.
Rodriguez.
There.
Aquino.
Yeah.
Chal and Chirla.
You're.
And Hal.
Here. If you guys will join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic. Dan's nation.
Intervisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So we're on to our only item for today's agenda, which is a council workshop on developing a strategy to close the city's future funding gap and direction to staff.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. And if I could ask Stacy Tumani to share our screen for the presentation today. Can I please be enabled? Okay, perfect. Good afternoon, everyone. We as staff are bringing you this workshop in our continuing effort to bring critical fiscal information to you as early as possible to allow for timely, thoughtful, strategic decision-making. I have served as your city manager for over three and a half years now, and unfortunately, within weeks of me taking the job, it became
Recording in progress.
became clear that we needed to ratchet back fiscally. Consequently, the near entirety of the last three and a half years has been marked by a need for financial restraint and constraint, which only dramatically deepened as the pandemic hit. I am deeply appreciative of the Folsom City Council's continued attention and commitment to prudent, wise fiscal decision-making. It is never easy to lead, but leading is particularly challenging when resources are scarce and scarcer. I thank you for stepping up, and I thank you for making the hard decisions. I am also deeply grateful to the city staff and particularly the city's executive management team who have strived to focus on a get-to-yes mentality and approach even in lean, uncertain, and unprecedented times. I am a proud 30-plus-year resident of Folsom and also a proud 17-year City of Folsom employee. I can comment from both perspectives that, as one would hope for from an outstanding, dynamic city home to so many talented people, our community and you as the city council have high and ever-growing expectations in terms of current and future city service levels, personnel, programs, facilities, technology, and infrastructure. We are here today not because there is an immediate budget problem. We can hold our own in our current constrained state in the current fiscal year. And we can do the same, again, still in that constrained state in the next fiscal year. But looking out farther, we know the trajectories are showing us that this is not sustainable, not only in terms of meeting current needs, but also in terms of making sure that we are meeting and ideally exceeding that very warranted community expectation pace. Please consider today's presentation and workshop as the first step in a strategic planning process for the city council. We feel very strongly that we need to take a quote "first things first" unquote approach to looking hard at some tough numbers as a first step. So that's what this afternoon is all about. This afternoon, you're going to hear first from Stacy Tumani, our Director of Finance and Chief Financial Officer, who is going to very thoroughly take you through the details of our fiscal picture and the funding gap that we are seeing in the future. Stacy will also highlight current and future needs organization-wide, many of which have been deferred for far too long. We will then discuss our American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA allocation from the federal government. We will also discuss potential revenue enhancements. Cuts are also an option for the future, and we will discuss those. From there, Communications Director Christine Brainard will discuss economic development strategies that the council may wish to prioritize as we plan for the future. These categories reflect the city's vision and guiding principles as outlined in the Vision Statement and Guiding Principles of the City's 2035 General Plan, which we brought to you for your adoption. Her presentation was prepared in consultation and partnership with Joe Galliardi of the Greater Folsom Partnership. And finally, Christine will discuss how we propose to engage our community in this critical conversation and to help us understand what their priorities are and what their appetite is for various possible approaches to close that future funding gap. We're very much hoping to leave this workshop with direction from you to embark on that process. And with that, I will turn it over to Stacy Tumani.
Thank you, Elaine. Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. Stacy Tumani, Chief Financial Officer. And as Elaine just introduced, this workshop is to begin the process of developing a strategy to close the city's funding gap in our general fund. Our revenues are growing at a slower pace than expenses, and as I've shown in past presentations, that creates a projected gap between our revenues and expenses in the future, meaning that we won't be able to balance the budget in future years unless we take some proactive action now. My part of the presentation will start with how is the city doing today? And then we'll take a look at the current citywide budget and review the different fund types that the city manages. We'll review those funds just at a high level. I think it's important to clearly differentiate revenues that are being collected for purposes that are outside of the general fund. And the focus will turn to the general funds revenue and expenses. We'll have a special section on both sales and property taxes. There are two biggest sources of revenue in the general fund, and these are factoring into the slowdown that we're seeing in our revenue growth. We'll continue with a five-year general fund financial forecast to get a feel for the magnitude of the projected budget shortfall in future years. And then at that point, I will turn it back over to Elaine. So how is the city doing today? Well, the city is fiscally sound, and we continue to take prudent actions to keep it that way. In the quarterly update that I'll be giving at the council meeting later tonight, I'll report that we're expecting the city's general fund to end this fiscal year with an unrestricted fund balance of about $21 million. For the most part, we have recovered from the financial downturn related to COVID-19, and we anticipate being able to bring a balanced budget proposal to the city council in April for fiscal year 2223. Well, then why are we here? Well, we've always been proactive, and we want to continue to be proactive. And we have an issue that needs to be addressed in these early stages. Our economy is changing, and those changes are affecting the city's revenue. Our five-year forecast is predicting an upcoming structural deficit. And although we are meeting all of our current obligations, there are also millions of dollars of unfunded or unfunded needs that the city has been deferring year after year. And unfortunately, those needs don't go away when they're deferred. They continue to accumulate, and the cost to pay for them continues to grow. We'll start with the citywide budget and operations. And I wanted to do this update on the revenue sources that the city has and the different fund types, and then we'll go over the restrictions for spending those resources. Sometimes it can be confusing when we have different revenue sources coming into the city, sometimes in very large amounts. And I want to be clear on why those dollars can't be used for general fund shortfalls that we're talking about today. This slide here shows our total citywide budget for all the fund types. That's the $220 million that the council approved and appropriated for fiscal year 2122. This is a combined figure for all of the fund types, including the general fund. So we have seven different categories and about 120 active funds that account for all of this activity here. Most will be familiar with the general fund. That's our activity for general city operations, including public safety, parks and recreation, public works, community development, the library, and all of our administration. And most of the revenue coming into the general fund is from property tax, sales tax, and charges for services. We then have enterprise, special revenue, debt service, capital project, internal service, and fiduciary funds. So the enterprise funds, the revenue there comes from rates, and those rates pay for the operations and capital expenses for that specific utility service only. So that's water, wastewater, and solid waste. And those rates can't be used for anything outside of that fund, and they cannot be used to support general fund operations. We have special revenue funds. Those are used to account for specific revenue sources that are legally restricted. Examples of that could be gas tax revenue used for street projects, lighting and landscape districts. That revenue comes in and it has to be used within that district. Or fees for affordable housing. It has to be spent on affordable housing projects. We have debt service funds. Those are used to account for the accumulation of resources that are legally restricted for long-term debt obligations. Again, restricted and can't be used for anything other than the debt service obligation. Capital projects funds, those account for the financial resources that are used for long-term major capital projects, and these are financed primarily by our impact fees. And this one's worth explaining just a little bit more. We'll hear comments about impact fees that are coming in from the construction in the planned area. And it's true that there are impact fees being paid with each building permit. And these fees are restricted specifically and only for the public improvements that they are being charged for. They can't be used for general fund operations, and so it doesn't impact or provide any benefit to the general fund, no matter how much is coming in from these impact fees. Internal service funds, those account for the financing of goods and services by one department into another fund on a cost-revenue-based basis. That is our risk management fund, our employee leave fund. And then we have our fiduciary funds. Those are established to hold money in trust for various purposes. Examples that we have our OPEB, our redevelopment fund, or our assessment districts. And the money that goes into those funds must be used for what it was intended for, and that is the only thing that that can be used for. So combined, we have that $220 million in the citywide budget, and this is how it's broken down. 26% for salaries, 18% for benefits, 25% for operations and maintenance, 3% for capital outlay, 17% for debt service, and 11% for CIP. So that was a summary of the city as a whole, and now we'll just take a look at the general fund. We're going to look at the components of both revenue and expenses, and we'll start with revenue. So here we have a slide that you've seen before. This is the city's major revenue sources, and these are the year-end projections for fiscal year '22. The reason I wanted to start with this slide is so that we can take a look at the percentage that each of our revenue sources is of our total general fund revenue. So for property tax this year, it's going to be about $33 million, and that's about 34% of our general fund. For sales tax, about $26 million, 27% of our general fund. Transient occupancy tax is 2% of our general fund, charges for services at 13%, license permits and vehicle license fees at 12%, transfers in at about 8%, and then all other revenue at 4%. We're going to go over property tax and sales tax in a lot more detail, so I just wanted to go over the definitions of some of these other ones quickly here. So TOT is the percent charged on all stays in a hotel within the City of Folsom. It's an 8% tax when you stay in the hotel that comes into our general fund. We have charges for services. Those are made up of engineering inspections, plan and map checks, administrative fees, fire services, and all of our parks and recreation programs. We have licenses, permits, and vehicle license fees. Those are business license certificates, building permits, encroachment permits, and fire and other permits, and of course, the vehicle license fees as well. Transfers in, these allocate the departmental costs that are incurred by the general fund to all of the other funds that receive benefit from those services, and that money is transferred into the general fund to cover that cost. And then that category of all other revenue is grants, reimbursements, third-party recoveries, donations, gifts, and anything else miscellaneous that doesn't fit into one of the other major categories. When we look at the revenues all combined like this, we see this big blue section here, property tax makes up 34%. Then we have our sales tax at 27%. So property tax and sales tax is about 61% of our total general fund revenue. That's where we're going to focus the rest of the revenue conversation on those two categories. Starting with property tax. And I wanted to just kind of get back to the basics here to describe for anyone who's not aware of how this works for us and how we receive the revenue. So California's approximate property tax rate is 1%. There can be extra voter-approved debts such as CFDs or school bonds, which many of our residents have as well, but the basic rate is 1%. And Folsom receives 20% of that 1% paid about. Approximate value of all property in Folsom based on the most recent assessor's report is $16.6 billion. 1% of that would be $166 million. So that's the amount of property tax receipts that's being generated from property within Folsom. And the City of Folsom receives $33 million from all of that. And how does it factor into a homeowner? Well, we can assume that the average taxable home value in Folsom is about $450,000. And just a note on that, yes, you could go on Zillow and your home value, maybe much more as far as how much it might sell for, but the assessed value could be much lower. And so right now, the average taxable home value is $450,000. That generates $4,500 in property tax, and Folsom gets $900 from that home for general fund operations. I have an older chart here. This is back from fiscal year 2003 through 2016 for property tax results. And the purpose of this slide is to show how property tax performed for us during the Great Recession. You can see that from fiscal year 2003 through '09, it was trending really nicely. It flattened out at the beginning of the recession, and then we saw this loss and a fairly slow recovery back through fiscal year '16. The city lost at least $7.4 million from this downturn in property tax, and it would likely have been a lot more. I was just doing an estimate of if it had stayed flat from fiscal year '09 through the recovery, how much did we lose? That was $7.4 million. It would have been much more if we're factoring in a likely upward trend that would have continued. So now this is a more recent chart of our property tax results. But what we start with here is fiscal year '13 with that reassessment that happened at the low point of the recession. And then, yes, we continue to grow. Property tax has been growing consistently each year. But this dotted line appears where property tax would have been if we hadn't had that downturn in this reassessment in fiscal year '13. It's about $7 million of lost revenue that we've seen every single year since then. And so although we say that we've recovered from the Great Recession, our revenue levels never recovered back to where they would have been. It just continued to recover from the very low point that it was reassessed to. And so this is part of the story of why there's been so much deferred projects and other items we haven't been able to add to the budget year after year. It's because we had to start over basically down in fiscal year '13 with our revenue trend for property tax. Now you will notice that it's a pretty consistent trend moving forward. There's no unforeseen windfalls here, but no projected decreases either. And COVID-19 hasn't had an impact on property tax revenue at this point. So in summary, for property tax, the growth trends are projected to continue to be steady at about 5% per year. And there's really little that the city can do to influence this growth, especially on our already-developed property. Per Prop 13, unless the property is sold, the assessed value can only increase by the change in CPI or 2%, whichever is less. So that impacts how much growth we can really have in property tax year over year. We'll move on to sales tax. This is the other major source of revenue, and our general fund has also played a big part in our revenue story. Same basic format here. So we'll start with the background. We have a 7.75% sales tax rate in Folsom. This is the state minimum of 7.25% plus a half percent Sacramento County tax for transportation, maintenance, and improvements, and that's Measure A. Folsom receives one cent of that 7.75 cents tax paid per dollar spent. The majority of it goes to the state, a half cent goes towards that Measure A, and a small amount goes to the county directly for programs, and Folsom gets one cent. The approximate annual taxable sales in Folsom is about $2.6 billion. So the sales tax generated from that within our city is $205 million. And after it gets dispersed to all of the agencies that take part in this, Folsom receives $26 million. Whoops. Looking at it by the average Folsom household, we have an average household income in Folsom of about $114,000. Of that income, it's assumed that we would spend about 25% of our income, or about $28,000, on taxable items. And of that $28,000, about 75% of it, or $21,000, is thought to be spent within the city. You might be spending others on vacations or in other areas. So that generates $1,600 in sales tax within the city. And Folsom gets $215 of that annually for general fund operations from the average household. I have a similar chart here from the past displaying our historical sales tax results for fiscal year 2003 through 2016. And we're seeing the dip in sales tax happened much earlier than it did for property tax. You'll recall that property tax didn't have an impact until about fiscal year '10. For sales tax, it started dipping in fiscal year '07. It was a much deeper dip. At least $27 million was lost during this downturn, and then in the time it took to recover. This is another big reason why we had to defer so many of the expenses. And for the most part, we're still being affected by the long-term impacts of these huge revenue losses during the Great Recession. Again, it left us at a low point that then we subsequently recovered from, but never back to the trend line that we were on. In this one here, property tax, I said has not responded to COVID, but we know that sales tax did. And so from fiscal year '19 down to fiscal year '20, we had this dip. We have recovered. But what has happened now is that we're seeing a two-part change to sales tax. There's a concern in the shift in consumer behavior, and there's also been changes in the way that revenue is being allocated to the city from the county pool, and neither of those changes benefit the city. It is a cause for concern for future years, and this is what this chart is showing. It's leading to a projection of much slower sales tax growth than we've seen in the past. The projection now from our sales tax consultants and other experts is that it will be about a 2.5% increase each year. So this is this much flatter dotted line below going forward for the next three years, projecting a 2.5% growth. Our previous trend at about 5% would have been projected to have growth way up here. So this change in the projections due to these long-term shifts in consumer behavior are going to have a really big impact on our projected funding gap in upcoming years. So why is this happening to sales tax? Well, there's a few reasons. There's a shift in what we buy. There's a shift from purchasing things to purchasing more services. There's a shift in how we buy it. E-commerce is becoming much more prevalent for most people, and when it goes through the county pool, we get less of that income. And also, there's a change in how much we can afford to buy. As there's an increase in the cost of services, as there's an increase in the cost of housing, it erodes the buying power for taxable goods. There's just not as much left over to spend on taxable goods, and that trend is not going away. Do we have any good news for sales tax? Yes, Folsom is generally known to be a sales tax importer. It's estimated that about 40% of the sales tax that we do receive is generated from non-Folsom residents. So that would be people coming in to the city to work during the day or coming in to eat, to stay, those types of things, and they don't live within the city. We also have a very diversified tax base, which helps if there is a downturn that's just focused on one or two industries. It might not affect us across the board. Concerns, we've gone over most of those already. It's quite volatile. And anytime there is an economic downturn, it usually reacts quickly, and it can be heavily impacted, which is what we saw. And those economic downturns, although they might not be as major as the ones we've seen lately, they do happen just cyclically. And so we always need to be prepared for that to happen again. And then, again, as I already mentioned, the spending trends continue to change, and so sales tax revenue growth will continue to be eroded because of that. And this chart here is the final chart for the revenue portion, and it's property tax and sales tax together. We have property tax in the blue line and sales tax in the orange. And what we saw from fiscal year '13 and actually before that through '17 is that they were trending along the same growth rate. And that allowed expenditures in the general fund to grow at that same rate as well, even a little bit below, so that there was funding for some additional things during those years. The gap between property tax and sales tax is now growing because in the past charts that we just saw, the sales tax trend has flattened out, and it's not continuing with the property tax trend, which means it's not continuing with the growth of our cost to provide services. And our sales tax is 27% of our general fund. So when we have 27% of our revenue not trending at the pace of our cost to provide services, our ability to provide those services is really being impacted. And you can see even from just the projections, these next three years, the gap will be growing as property tax and expenditures would likely trend up, but sales tax stays flat. So now we're moving on to general fund expenses. And the majority of our general fund budget is for our major operational departments. We'll call them the big six for this presentation. So that's police, fire, parks and recreation, community development, public works, and the library. And we also have our administrative and support functions within the general fund, city council, city manager. That includes communications. We have city clerk, city attorney, the office of management and budget, which includes IT, human resources, building maintenance, and fleet. When we look at those big operational departments in this pie chart form, over 80% of the general fund budget is made up of this big six department. So I'm going to focus the rest of this expenditure section on those major departments, since they make up the majority of the general fund and the general fund expenses. The first chart here is on our general fund expenditure growth. And what we've seen so far is that our trends for the cost of providing services has been about a 4.5% annual increase over the past 10 years. So like we saw in that property tax and sales tax chart, that would have been below the trend when they were trending together. What we're moving towards now is a flatter growth trend for fiscal year '21. It was reduced because of COVID, and we need to really constrict to get through that time period. And then for fiscal year '22, because we were aware of this upcoming funding gap, we've seen it coming for a couple of years now. We were very proactive in managing any expenditure growth for this year as well. So what have we already done to manage this challenge? Well, during the Great Recession and beyond, Folsom, like many, if not most cities, utilized existing cash and reserves to fund ongoing operations. So that was one big tool that was used and also used during COVID. We also instituted a funding pause of internal service funds, OPEB, and capital replacement funds, which means it saved the general fund money because they didn't fund those projects or funds during that time. We also had to defer maintenance of buildings, equipment, and vehicles. That meant extending the life of vehicles longer than you would normally want to, delaying roof and building repairs, delaying replacing IT hardware and software, and delaying park maintenance. And then over the last 10 years, the city has significantly reduced staffing levels, and I have a couple additional charts on that. They've remained flat for the past four years. All departments are doing more with less people. We use part-time or contract employees whenever feasible. We've increased the employee contribution towards retirement. All employees pay their entire share. We've eliminated retiree health benefits for new employees. We've increased employee contributions to health benefits. We've also restructured education incentive pay to provide a cost savings to the general fund. We've extended the number of steps that are in pay ranges so that there's a smaller annual pay increase. We've eliminated longevity pay for new employees, and we've capped accrued leave balances and cash-out amounts. So with all of these actions over the past 10 years, we've reduced current expenses and future expense growth significantly. The result now is that the city has a very limited ability to reduce service costs further because we've already done all this. We've really done all that we know to to control the budget from the expense side. And so without increased revenues, it would require a reduction in city services in order to balance the budget. We look at our full-time positions kind of then and now. For fiscal year 2008, we had 461 full-time positions, and then a number of part-time positions as well. Right now, for fiscal year '22's budget, we have 352.8 approved positions. So over 100 less than we had in fiscal year 2008. When we look at it on the right side, that's general fund employees per 1,000 residents. We had 6.81 general fund employees per 1,000 residents in 2008. We now have 4.39 general fund employees per 1,000 residents. So 36% reduction in general fund employees per 1,000 residents. And then this is similar data just displayed in a different way. The blue bars are our general fund positions. You see it coming down very quickly and swiftly during the recession, and then pretty much staying flat over the last 10 years as the population has continued to grow. So the growing cost to do what we're already doing is So the growing cost to do what we're already doing is one part of our challenge. But the other part is all of our unfunded or underfunded needs that our operating departments face. And you've heard both the city manager and myself using some of our budget meetings that there were so many items left on the cutting room floor. And this chart right here displays the magnitude of those needs, the ones that keep just being cut out and not being able to be funded. And they've gotten to this level, they've accumulated to after years of having to defer them because there's just been such a constrained budget. Much of this accumulation is going back 10 years of things that have continually been requested and just not been able to be funded. And a lot of it goes back to those big revenue losses that we had during the Great Recession and most recently, the impacts of COVID. And then we have this flattening our revenue growth. And this right here in this chart is the result. So our city manager asked all of our department heads to create a comprehensive analysis of their unmet current and future needs. The one-time cost, these would be for fairly major projects that would just happen once in the next five years and then not continue for a long period of time to be a one-time expense. It's about $39 million of costs between our six major operating departments. The annual costs, these are things like staffing needs. They are line items in the budget that are continuously underfunded. They are maintenance needs that are either not being done or underfunded for each of these departments. And I'll go into a little more detail on some other slides of what makes these up. That's about $20 million that we have of unfunded annual costs in the next five years. And then we have our one-time cost for the future, that's five years and beyond, $233 million projected to do all of those. The last column there, the additional positions needed, totals 102 positions. And those costs are accounted for in the annual costs column there of the 20 million. So the first department, and these are just kind of a summary of what was submitted to create that chart. Before our police department, the needs are deployment vehicle, a small armored vehicle, mobile command vehicle, marked and unmarked police vehicles, facility renovations and technology updates, and then their staffing needs. 28 officers, six dispatchers, two community service officers, two animal control officers, and then other professional support staff of 12. For our fire department, fire station and facility upgrades. Engines, trucks, medic vehicles and staff vehicles. Small equipment such as wildland apparatus and mechanical CPR device. And then their staffing needs, 18 firefighters, two mechanics, fire marshal, deputy chief, division chief, and two administrative captains. For parks and recreation, this is broken down into two slides. There are many unfinished but planned parks, trails, and facilities that are on that unfunded list. City facility renovations such as ADA for parks and facilities, building maintenance, turf, both indoor and outdoor for the Andy Moore and Sports Complex, irrigation controller upgrades and 17 park locations. There's park renovations per the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, ladder fuel maintenance and hazard tree care, and then aquatic center upgrades and equipment replacement. Their staffing needs broken down by the different divisions in Parks and Recreation. Municipal Landscape Services Staff, an engineering technician, two senior maintenance workers, two maintenance workers and a maintenance supervisor. We have park maintenance staff, a park planner, maintenance workers, three of them, an irrigation system coordinator. And then in recreation, staff coordinator and an administrative assistant. Community development has a need for funding for consulting services for studies, plans, and updates. Their staffing needs include a development services analyst, GIS specialist, a building plans coordinator, a building inspector, building plan checker, a construction inspector, a planning technician, and a code enforcement officer. For public works, additional street sweeper, fueling system upgrades, tank replacement and new fuel pumps, funding for various studies, including the courtyard, traffic demand management, noise reduction program, and an in-lu fee study for the historic district, public electric vehicle charging stations. And then staffing needs, an associate engineer for traffic, an associate engineer for CIP, two street maintenance workers, a street sweeper maintenance specialist, and two sign shop maintenance workers. And then the library has a need for carpet replacement for their 13,700 square feet. So I put this slide back up here again just to revisit. So all of those items that were on those lists make up the one-time cost at 39 million and then the annual funded cost of about 20.5 million. And there's no identified funding source for these costs. As we look ahead to the next five years, this is our projected revenue trend for all the revenue types that we currently have in the general fund. That's the blue bars here, moving forward from fiscal year 23 to fiscal year 27. And then the yellow line that goes above is our projected cost of providing the current level of service. So everything that we're currently doing. It doesn't include adding any of those unfunded needs that we just went over. That would add an additional $20 million annually to this line here and to the gap. What I do want to mention is that it does project some additional required levels of service that would be really related to the growth south of 50. And on the next slide, I'll talk about that a little bit more. But what we're seeing here is that by fiscal year 27, we would have about a $2.3 million funding gap. And you'll notice that there's also one in fiscal year 26 and there's also a gap in fiscal year 25. Small one in fiscal year 24. We expect to be able to bring a balanced budget to the council for fiscal year 23. In total, it's about $4.3 million over the next five years. And you'll also notice that it pretty much doubles as we move forward from fiscal year 25 to 26 to 27. So you can anticipate what the next couple would be if something doesn't change fairly quickly. So this was just the extra comments here on the Folsom planning area development and how it affects the general fund revenue and expenses. The property tax increases are expected and they are factored into those projections. And then there are planned expenses to provide services for that area. And those are also factored into our expense projections. So in total, it creates a net zero effect on the general fund. And so it doesn't have an impact or skew that funding gap that we just reported on that previous slide. So to end my remarks and my portion of this conversation, what we're seeing here is that we're looking at a deficit of at least $2 million in the very near term. And so solutions to this have to be of that magnitude. That's going to mean that revenues need to be increased to at least that level or cuts to city services will have to be to that extent. And now I'll turn it back over to our city manager. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Stacy. And I know that this is a lot of information. So I'm going to try to pause at the end of each section to ask if you have questions. And then also want to emphasize, that doesn't mean you can't answer questions at the end of the presentation either. So just want to pause for a moment and ask the city council if you have any questions about anything you just heard from Ms. Tmani before we move on.
I have a question. Just elaborate a little more on sales tax growth is flattening. How, can you elaborate on how that is forecasted?
Sure, we do have a sales tax consultant. I can go back to the slides if any of those are helpful.
Sorry, I should have got the number of the slide. Sorry.
Okay, I'll just go back quickly. Don't get dizzy.
Pulling out my drama, me and Stacey.
I know, sorry. So it has to do with some of the trends that we were talking about on specifically this slide. So even though we might have an increase in population, if more people are purchasing services and they're spending less of their money on things, those services aren't taxed. And so that leads to people still spending on taxable items, but they're just spending less of it on things that we get tax revenue from. So that's one of the shifts. The internet sales is a big shift for us because we get less of it. So that trend of it shifting to internet sales means that if it continues to grow, but we're getting less of it, that's why it's flatter. So the internet sales could continue to grow. People could continue to put more of their taxable money into an online sale, but we're going to get less of it and that will continue. And then the thing that I think what you're really referring to is why would the trend change and just stay flatter versus maybe shifting one time and then continuing to grow? But that's because of these other things eroding the buying power. And that's what continues to go forward is if housing continues to grow, the cost of housing, if the cost of services continue to grow, it just leaves less for people to spend on taxable goods. So all three of them combined is what's leading to that.
Okay, and then I have one more question. Citywide expenses, 26% of salaries. Is this a standard for government agencies to be in that range or that percent?
That was for citywide. Now that would change based on what other types of funds different governments have in their pool of funds. We have enterprise funds, we have debt service funds, we have capital projects funds. If there are cities that don't have all of that, that percent would change. So that's a little bit hard to compare. Now, our general fund, when we talk about salaries and benefits as a percent of our general fund, that is most of the time right in line with what you see from others. And we've done comparisons on that, like how much is spent on public safety or how much is spent on other things.
Okay. Our pie is cut out the same way as you generally see in similar cities.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Stacy, yeah. Among these three, which one sees the, you know, large pie? How do we buy it on the internet sales? Are shifting the trend? I know, I'm still trying to digest, it's hard for me. Which one is the bigger, you know, impact among those three for sales tax?
I don't have data that shows exactly how each one is impacting our total sales tax because that isn't the way that the sales tax data comes into us. What we're seeing is that the county pool was growing, right? We knew that, we knew people were shifting to internet sales. It is not the largest section of our, of our sales tax revenue. And so although it might be something that's affecting sales tax overall, it's not our biggest factor. So some of our biggest factors would be that people are just spending less in general on taxable goods. But there's no, there's no way for me to tell which one is affecting it the most. It's a combined, it's a combined impact.
Yeah, you mentioned, I think we have a sales tax consultant, right? Probably, I still need to understand because this is the problem. What I think you have explained very clearly, property tax is growing even though from the Great Recession, it is not there. Still 7 million gap, but the more trending one and the widening is the sales tax. I'm following, but not following on the details. Maybe we need to dig into these three bullets with help of consultant. It doesn't have to be right now when time permits down the road.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Stacy, you mentioned 352 city employees. When I gave the state of the city address in 2020, there were 452 city employees. So is that 100, is that primarily parks and rec?
February.
temporary employees because of the lack of programming because of COVID?
Yeah, these were just, you know, approved in the budget, full-time employees. That's what that chart was.
Okay. Any other questions at this point in the presentation?
Slide number 38, Stacy, I know. I'm trying to note down the slide numbers, right? I was the one who was. I'm sorry, 49. I know. Yes, ma'am, sorry, that was my mistake. Could you please elaborate the last statement? I know the properties being sold on south of 50, since our property tax rate is 34% of the general fund. Those are very expensive. And we all know that besides the CPI and 2% assessment value year over year, these prices are very high compared to the $450,000 property tax hike. And the planned expenses, I'm still not getting it. How it is going to be the next zero when we are making so much revenue from that?
Yeah, I'll go over this again. So one example is that when we have the new fire station built in the plan area, they'll need to be staffing for that. And so the property, the increase to our general fund property tax from properties down in the plan area, we're tracking. We're able to see what is coming in from those properties being reassessed as they sell. And so that revenue is projected in our total revenue projections. And then what's also being projected with the expectation that the council would approve this is the service levels that were promised, such as staffing that first fire station, providing extra officers that are needed down there, maintenance staff for the open space. So all departments have needs because of that growing service level. And so the expectation is that as property tax increases, we would be able to take that increase to the council in whatever budget year it is and say, we have this increase in property tax. These are the service levels that we're proposing to increase as well, based on this increase in property tax. So it would zero out. And the point of saying that was that there wasn't, there's not a bunch of property tax that we're not accounting for or there's not a bunch of expenses to provide service levels that we're not accounting for. The point of this slide was to say they're both in there, we're not going to spend more than we bring in. And so it's going to equal zero because we'll fund those levels of services to the amount of property tax that's coming in from the plan area.
Yeah, so just to elaborate on that. Elaine, I just want to make sure how the pattern of this workshop. I know we are doing first time and this is a fast session. I don't want to kill all the time here.
Oh, you're absolutely fine. Please ask your questions, we welcome them.
Right, thank you. And on slide 38, where we said 38 million, we don't have to go there. $38 million is unfunded for police, fire, and parks and rec. Those are the big ticketed items on unfunded ones. And when we were explaining and you have illustrated that we do need some staffing, police and fire and, you know, parks and rec. So are we bringing some of the staff from this line item? And that is probably supposed to be adjusted? Am I making sense what I'm trying to say here? Because from the, from the south side of the revenues, what we are getting in various ways, city is anticipating to hire to fulfill the bullet number two. Besides building the fire station, fire station is, you know, coming from another bucket. Am I making sense there?
Yeah, YK, that does make sense. And I would have to, or Elaine, to bring back maybe a slide that breaks out from each department, which, which positions were for the plan area and which positions are for just general increased service levels? And that'd probably be helpful to you.
It is, right? You know, because the houses are coming and the, you know, almost 3,000 homes or 2,800 probably. Pam may have those numbers more accurate, how many permits has been poured. In a net, 3,000 homes are coming, each one is selling almost $700, $800,000 there, which is almost double than what is average price of Folsom on this side.
So actually, YK, that's not accurate. The number that, the number of the assessed value that they included was the taxable value is 450. The, the average house price in Folsom is not that much lower than what houses are selling for in the plan area.
I, man, I don't know whether I'm following what you stated.
Okay, so YK, you're referring to the $450,000 that Stacy talked about? That's the taxable number. How, the average house value, the average sales value in Folsom is, I don't know the number off the top of my head. I'm going to guess it's bumping 600,000?
Got it. I'm following you.
So those, that's two different sets of numbers. So the taxable number is one thing. The sales price, whether it's north of the freeway or south of the freeway, is not that different.
Agreed, 100%. Thank you. My question is more on the, you know, taxable. That's what I think we are talking here, how the revenues are impacting, which is a 400,000 to 800,000. I think Stacy, since you have mentioned, yep, I think there may be some officers and some staff is being recruited as a part of number two bullet here to serve the Folsom South. But we, we probably may have to break down that down the road. So hence then the last bullet is, okay. It answers my question. I think we still need to break that down, how many people, staff, we are planning to hire as a part of the vote.
Okay, any other questions on this segment?
In one general, Stacy, I know average year over year, I think you mentioned this on slide number 32. Our expenses are growing at the rate of 4.5. And what is that revenues growth? Yeah, this is a 4.5, this is the expenses, you know, from the general fund. I couldn't catch the delta. What is the revenue growth and the expense growth year over year? What is the revenue growth and the expense growth year over year?
I didn't do that in a percentage, unfortunately, so I don't have that off the top of my head. But the last slide that we had here. You can, you can kind of see the difference, so that was the, the revenue. Because it's growing flatter. Now, this is, this is going to be a combined because of the trend going out. So we had about five percent in property tax and about a two and a half percent in sales tax. And if you wanted the exact number of what this ends up being, it's probably. About four percent and then we have our expenses growing at the higher level. But I'd have to go back and, and get that number for you to be exact.
Yeah, I'm going to make a note on forty-eight, okay. I think those are the initial questions for me as we are going next three plus hours, we'll come back to some of these.
Okay, uh, thank you, Councilor Talentara. Anyone else have any other questions? Okay, so before that question answered period, Stacy kind of ended her remarks with. Whatever solution we come up with needs to equate to at least two million dollars. And, and I, and I, and I'm saying, I'm emphasizing that at least because again, that doesn't account for that extra. Twenty million dollars of other stuff that we really ought to be doing that we're not doing. So what we're going to transition to now is talking about some potential solutions. And I just ask you to keep in mind the magnitude of the challenge that we're dealing with. So, um, first of all, I'm going to start with ARPA. That's the American Resource Plan Act. And you know that the city did Rescue Plan Act, excuse me. The city did receive an allocation from the federal government of ARPA COVID nineteen relief funds. Unfortunately, although we were initially told we received fifteen point three million, our allocation was instead cut to eight point four million. We have shared this disappointing information with you before, but we thought it was important to revisit it for the benefit of anyone else's participating in this meeting. As you'll remember, we've already received half of that eight point four. So we have four point two million in, in our coffers and we'll get another four point two million sometime this coming summer. To be clear, uh, these ARPA dollars in no way cover the total hit to our budget in terms of revenues. COVID nineteen has cost us at least twenty million dollars and counting in terms of lost revenues to date. The, the council also recently approved a waiver of business license, license fees to, you know, very deservedly. Support businesses during this difficult time and that's another seven hundred thousand or so per year in lost revenue for as long as that continues. Just as a refresher, the city council has already approved two point two million dollars for, in ARPA funding for, to pay for a new city hall HVAC system. Facility painting, police fleet and fire department facility upgrades and equipment. The council also indicated what I perceive to be a consensus interest in moving forward with a future allocation to fund master plans. For both the river district and the central business district. And if you totaled those together, that would be about five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So about two point eight million dollars of the ARPA funding the city received is already accounted for. If you throw in those master plans. ARPA dollars must be obligated and spent by the end of the calendar year twenty twenty-four, so by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. So we can't, for example, just sock away the remaining dollars in our rainy day fund. We can however, use the ARPA dollars to fund general fund expenses through calendar year twenty-four to help give us a temporary crutch. And I say temporary because they are one-time dollars. There is no indication at this point that we will be re-infused at a future date by the federal government with another eight point four million. Um, and I, I really want to emphasize that ARPA should not be seen as a consistent predictable revenue stream. It is a hundred percent one-time as far as we know. Any questions on ARPA? Okay, I will move on. Part of the solution puzzle can also lie in revenue enhancements, um, which is a fancy way of just saying, you know, extract some more money. And for example, we can increase rates and fees. I want to caution however, that doing so would have a fairly minimal impact overall on the future funding gap. So it could only be part of the solution. For example, if we increased all parks and recreation fees by a ten percent increase, which would, I think, be perceived by our customers as a fairly large increase. That would only yield another about two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars or so in revenues each year. You know, as we scan our organization, we could also look at, for example, raising our ambulance fees. But we aren't even hitting our targets as it is in terms of our ambulance revenues. The pandemic seems to have changed how people view using ambulances and, and heading to the emergency room. So that probably isn't a likely category for extracting some more dollars. We could also raise planning and development fees, you know, basically the cost of, you know, um, you know, building and doing building and development business with our city. We must remember that we cannot legally charge more than the cost of providing the service with regard to those fees. So if there was a council interest in looking at those, we need to engage a consultant for what's called a nexus study first. And then see if we have room to grow in terms of those fees.
And just a reminder, we did that, I don't remember what year it was, we've done that fairly recently.
Yeah, correct. Also, we always need to be mindful that there is a tipping point. And what I mean by that is if you push fees too high in certain areas, then the math isn't necessarily so straightforward. That you can just continue to count on the exact same number of people buying the service. Then the number of those that choose to stop using the service because the cost has increased. May just make it a wash or worse to increase that fee. And by worse, I mean that we could risk actually decreasing our revenue by, by raising our fees. So we have to, we'd have to look at that very closely.
And I, I did have a resident tell me just yesterday afternoon. That in looking at fees for park reservations as an example, for like kids' birthday parties. It is about. Twenty-five percent of the cost for a facility rental in, in a, in a park setting. In Eldorado County than it is in the city of Folsom. So there's, there's a, you know, again, these are not big numbers on that. But there are people that are choosing if they can, they can get a reservation in Eldorado Hills for fifty dollars and pay two fifty in Folsom, they're going to go to Eldorado Hills.
Understood, so yeah, I mean, that is part of the equation. You know, we always want people to choose Folsom and choose our programs and services. And we just have to be sure as best as possible that we hit that sweet spot where they're willing to make the purchase and it continues our revenue stream. So we're help, we're very happy to further explore any potential rate and fee increases. The council wishes to learn more about organization-wide. But again, I want to emphasize that raising rates, rates and fees even in multiple areas would not close our funding gap. Finally, the council could also consider asking the voters to approve an increase in our sales tax. If voters approved an additional half cent, the sales tax revenue received by the city would increase by about eleven million dollars annually. A full cent increase would yield close to twenty-two million dollars annually, so just twice that obviously. Um, as Stacy mentioned earlier, Folsom sales tax rate currently stands at just the state's base rate of seven point two five. Plus another point five for measure A transportation for a total of seven point seven five percent. And, and again, as Stacy pointed out, remember that if you consider a purchase of one dollar that's made in Folsom. And you think, oh, our tax rate is seven point seven five percent. That doesn't mean the city gets seven point seven five cents of the dollar. The city actually only gets one cent of that dollar. If the voters were to approve a local sales tax measure, however, the entirety of that portion would all go to us. So voters would be directly funding their own city for their own services. Traditional estimates, and I think Stacy mentioned this as part of her presentation as well. Show that about forty percent of sales tax is actually paid by non-residents. By way of comparison, Roseville already has a half cent increase. Rancho Cordova has a full cent increase. Sacramento has a full cent increase, Davis has a full cent increase and West Sacramento has a full cent increase. Just as examples. Any questions on that? Portion? Just trying to take frequent pauses here. I know it's a lot of information.
This is, mine's not really a question, it's probably more of a statement. Having been on the council for quite some time. And every now and then, every few years, there would be some conversation about whether or not we're going to have. A discussion about increasing sales tax, sales tax in Folsom. The most recent one, I think, had to do with whether or not we're going to do it specifically for park facilities. I had historically resisted supporting that for a number of different reasons. I didn't want Folsom sales tax to be higher than, than everybody else's, given the number of people that we know that shop in Folsom. But don't live here. I think I used to think that some of that had to do with the sales tax number. But I have decided that I don't really think that has any, um, any effect at all. I think it's that there are people within Sac County and outside Sacramento County, predominantly Eldorado County, maybe some, to some extent, Placer County. But they come here because we have Costco, we have Sam's Club, we have lots of stuff for them to do. They can go to the zoo, then they decide to go out to eat or shopping or whatever. And those are people that don't live here. But I don't think that the lower sales tax in Folsom has anything to do with those decisions. And having said that, and seeing that Folsom used to be much more red than it is now. We're more, we're more purple, I think, than we used to be. So I'd like to think that there would be, um, that maybe Folsom, and, and I'll use measure A as the example. Measure A never passed in Folsom. And we were usually one of the lower positive rates in all of Sacramento County with regard to that, that transportation sales tax. But I'd like to think that if we as a community were to get the word out for the benefit that this would cause. Financially to the city and our ability to maintain programs and facilities moving into the future. I think we, we need to give a strong consideration to whether or not we want to talk about doing the sales tax measure.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other comments or questions at this point?
Elaine, I, I know you mentioned a few of the other cities, our sister, you know, nearby cities. As a, you know, increase, does that mean the cities you're not mentioning, Elgro, Rockland? They're still at the seven point seven five percent tax or, or you're just picked only a few for sample?
I don't, I just picked a few for an example. I don't have that right in front of me, Stacy. I don't, I'm not going to put you on the spot, but maybe we could return to you. I know you may have a spreadsheet that lays out some of those and we can come back to that.
Yeah, it's interesting, you know. I, I respect what, you know, Mayor Hall said. But at the same time, we got to see what cities are still at the bed bone of seven point seven five with the state minimum, except the. Measure A funds, uh, how are they doing and how are they surviving? Just take a looking at it from the perspective of the residents helps all of us as well.
And we'll, we'll work on getting that number either during this workshop or getting information during this workshop or afterwards. For sure. I will, I, I, I think I would most certainly echo the mayor's comments that I, I don't think your average shopper is choosing Folsom. Because we have a bargain in sales tax. And I think that the, the long line you see, you know, entering at the East Build, East Bidwell exit, you know, coming in on Fridays is, you know, or Saturday mornings is. Because they're choosing Folsom because of the diversity and variety of amenities, experiences, you know, dining, shopping. So we, we have a great, I, I believe a great product here and a lot of people are choosing it. Um, and I don't know that it correlates with sales tax, um, the sales tax rate, so. Any other questions or comments about that portion?
Just one more comment in support of what you said, Elaine. I know you just gave a general number of, you know, COVID hit us twenty million dollars.
Yeah.
Right? It's, it's kind of a general, but the hit is going to be going forward. There is, you know, so much we don't know.
Whereas, I mean. Yeah, the big, I mean, the big hit has happened. I mean, that, you know, that, that's, you know, and, and no, we can't predict the future and we don't know the volatility, what's ahead with COVID. I, I sure hope that we are, you know, we're seeing numbers decline now. We're going to get back to something that looks like normalcy, but. You know, we had some pretty darn big hits in terms of, you know, sending employees home, unemployment for employees. We had to, you know, release big hits related to the pandemic because we just turned off our programming. So that it was, you know, so it is twenty million dollars, dot, 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 you know, and we'll, we'll see what's, what's ahead.
The only, the only other thing I would add to that, Elaine, is that we thought a year ago, this was all going to be well past us. No one expected this to go on for a second full year.
Yeah, exactly. I always use as my, my benchmark, um, you know, I, I started as your city manager on my birthday, July sixteenth, twenty eighteen. And every year since then, in July, I wrote a memo to the council of what happened the previous year as part of my performance evaluation. And it was when I read, when I, when I approached my evaluation this last July and looked back to the previous July of what I wrote. It was very much written in a way that, oh, we're about to wrap this whole pandemic thing up and things are looking bright and sunny and, you know, and then it was just boom again. You know, and of course, we've been struggling through a very tough time, uh, just recently with the Omicron variant. You know, our, our personnel, it's, it's hit very hard on the city organization, not, not to mention just the Folsom as an entirety. So, um, been, been very challenging times and very much a roller coaster. Any other comments or, of course, we'll come, come back to any part of this, but just wanted any other questions on just that kind of revenue enhancement section?
Elaine, I can answer the question about Elgro and Rockland, they're both at the base rate.
Okay. Thank you. So they're at seven, seven, five.
So. Rockland's at seven, two, five because they're in a different county, but both at the base.
Okay, they're not in Sacramento County that would have the, the. Yep, understood.
Yeah. Elaine, just for the public purpose, there may be so many people are tuning into this special session. It's good that we got to the number of forty percent of the sales tax revenue is being generated from the non-Folsom residents. Like the nearby cities, people are visiting or the chamber is pulling so many events and people are coming. Is there a, a, a logic behind the forty percent or it's just? A general number?
Stacy.
Yeah, there's been studies done. They're, they're a little bit outdated now based on that, so for the most part, it is. It is logic based on the calculation that we had done about the average household and what they're spending based on income. And if that gets then calculated by the amount of households that we have, it comes up to a number that's significantly less. Than, than sixty percent of the revenue that we're bringing in. So it may even be more than forty percent for Folsom specifically. But generally, the studies have said about forty percent for a city that has the makeup that we have of shopping.
Thank you so much, Stacy. I, I just want to make sure people listening, it's not just the city hall is pulling that forty percent number. It has been driven by the logic and the studies and that's where we are. Thank you.
I, I think that's important because if we look at a half a cent, which basically double, that is a fifty percent increase in the amount of sales tax that stays within the city. By comparison to the one percent, or if we actually doubled it by doing a full, um, a full cent. And, and we're somewhere in the forty to fifty percent of that money is coming from the pockets of, of non-residents. That's significant.
Yeah, and, and, and thank you, Mayor, and, and just to reamplify the point also that that money, that is not the situation where we have to dip. You know, as, you know, we get the, just the tiny percentage, we get it all. It's wholly ours, um, in, in the city of Folsom organization to spend for the city of Folsom's benefit. Okay, um, so I'm going to move on to another potential solution. Not one that I like too much, but we have to talk about. The council can also direct that we cut our way out of this future funding gap, either wholly or partially. As your city manager and in close consultation with Stacy, our CFO and our department heads. I need to say that we have a very limited ability to reduce our costs further in our organization. I don't mean to be repetitive, but we are lean, we are frayed. You heard me say this probably many times at this point. It is a near daily balancing act, and I think my department heads can attest to this. At this point in my role as city manager, to work with incredibly dedicated department heads. To try to plug holes in the dyke, or maybe I should say damn, you know, because we're in Folsom. But you know, it's, 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 it's almost a daily conversation with at least one department head. What are we going to do to cover this need? Again, with only the same resource set, you know, but just constantly, it's just whack a mole, honestly. We're trying to do all we can to cover everything and then also these growing expectations. But again, it's not sustainable in my view. So for example, you know, in the past, we've had city managers who've just directed us to do some kind of across-the-board cut. Every department head was given an assignment of, you know, cut this percentage. So I could, you know, if, if, you know, I, me directing the department heads to say, cut their expenditures by fifteen percent. For example, just as a, just a place to go would be. For example, just as a, just a place to go would be, I believe, nearly impossible for department heads to achieve because they are just at the bone. We are beyond, you know, the last hole of that proverbial tightened belt. You know, I remember one council meeting where, you know, somebody said, well, you just got to tighten our belt. And it's like, I'm just, I just think of that as I see that belt is just pulled so far that you're, you're out of holes. And I am not trying to be dramatic in any sense. It's just that's where we are. There's no more tightening of the bell. That said, we can discuss eliminating services altogether and achieve savings. You know, what I'm meaning by that is, you know, stop trying to nip around the edges, but just get out of certain businesses that the city is currently in. But we want to do that very strategically based on council and community prioritization of services and values. And we really want to make sure that we're not eliminating programs and services that actually yield significant revenue for us. So it would be, again, this balancing act of figuring out, you know, what to unload and making sure that it doesn't send our revenues the opposite direction from what we intended. Any questions on that before I move on to the next section?
I have a question. So is it, is it a, should we look at programs that cost us more money to operate than are bringing in? Is that something that we want to look at to see what, if, if we were to look at some of these programs that need to be cut? Is that one area that we could look at?
Yeah, and we have looked at that, you know, like Parks and Rec is a, is a good one to point out because that's honestly where there's the most room to work with things and looked at each one in terms of cost recovery. And yes, Councilwoman Rodriguez, that would be the exact analysis that you would do. And Lorraine Pajoni, our Parks and Rec Director, I believe you're here with us. And maybe, maybe you could just comment on kind of the work that's been done in the Parks and Rec Department by way of of cost recovery, you know, in terms of the programs and in terms of what, what they cost us.
Sure. Thank you. Hi, everybody. Lorraine Pajoni. Yeah, we actually did, last year, when we had this, this topic come up at council, we looked at our various programs and services, and there's cost recovery goals for each of them. And some of them are low, medium, and high. So I looked at about 20 different sections, 20 different types of programs we offer. And all of our cost, all of our cost recovery in each of those is either exceeding the cost recovery goals or at the high end of those. So.
Examples of that, Lorraine?
Sure, like, when you look at like our swim lessons. Or, yeah, our swim lessons would be one of them. Our goal is at like 50%, but we're more at 75%. And when you look at some of the, the programs we offer, we thought, well, we did that analysis. We would probably find one or two things that we should, you know, focus on and eliminate. But our cost recovery is right where it needs to be in the goals that were established by council in 2007. Like I said, either in the high range or in the out, outside of even those goals, you know, do we offer free things like extravaganza? You know, events free to the public? Yeah, you know, and, and those are things that, you know, we could look at and say, hey, let's not do those anymore. But they also have a huge, you know, community, you know, opportunity. And we bring in vendors and we bring in, you know, businesses. So they're rising with the tide while, while people are having fun. So we certainly have a few handful of free things like our concerts and that. But those actually don't take a lot of staff resources to do, so.
Yeah, there's just, you know, there's, thank you, Lorraine, you know, there's, there's trade offs, obviously. And we're, we, you know, just as my other comments before, we're happy to take a look at anything the council is curious about. You know, I would say in general, just as Lorraine said, that the kinds of things that we tend to do for low cost or no cost is for a reason, either because it's just kind of part of what defines our 95630 experience here, or we see it as an economic developer, you know, that it's, you know, people come for the egg hunt, but they stay, you know, hang out to go shopping and dine, that kind of thing. So, but that's, but Councilwoman Rodriguez, you're, you're right on. I mean, that's, that's the kind of thing, you know, we could, we could, you know, look, look more closely at. Again, I don't think that would yield a huge amount of money, to be honest, but, but it's something.
In that same vein, though, I think maybe we should give a little bit of consideration to doing some partnering type events. And this probably goes best with Parks and Rec activities for things, and I'll, I'll just, you know, pick random things. Hold an event. We did, you know, we did a couple of dinners a couple of different times on, on bridges as an example when at the Hinkle Creek project, and that was money that went on that, the first one, the Hinkle Creek was done by Parks and Rec. And that went toward increased amenities in that park. I don't know what the total number of dollars was that was raised for the bridge dinner on the Johnny Cash Trail, but I would think, given the number of people that went and the cost involved in that, that, that raised some, some money. So that's something that if, if we, if we don't have the personnel to run those kinds of events on our own, then maybe we partner with somebody. I don't know if it's the chamber or, you know, somebody else. And then we, so that somebody else is going to organize the event, have it at one of our city-owned facilities, and we get a piece of the action based on whatever the ticket price is.
Sure.
Those sorts of things I think could be, could be helpful. And there, they tend to be high profile. You know, use the city of, the farm-to-fort dinner in the city. You know, those tickets sell out within about 15 seconds, and I'm thinking there's a significant amount of money that ends up going to the City of Sacramento for having organized the event. So.
Yeah.
Again, they're not, they're not going to solve the problem, but it's things I think we ought to be considering. Because it brings people into Folsom, and they'll hang around longer, they'll show up earlier, they'll come back for the next event. Those are the kinds of things I think we ought to be thinking about.
Yeah, thank you. And Lorraine, I don't know if you have any specifics on that dinner on the bridge or your recollection of kind of, you know, what, what that yielded.
I don't have the exact numbers, but I, I believe it did not yield an enormous amount of money. It was a very unique, first ever, probably, you know, I know it was the first ever event on the bridge. It had a lot of, it had, it had a lot of moving parts to make that, make that work. But it was indeed a fun event, but I don't think it was a big moneymaker.
But you're right. Thank you, Lorraine. And Mayor, you're, you're right. I mean, if we got kind of streamlined in our approach to that, or we had a partner who would maybe take a cut, or, you know, something, you know, of it, or revenues, or something like that, you know, maybe we could kind of get that down and, you know, and, and, and raise some dollars that way. I mean, it was, it couldn't, it couldn't hurt, that's for sure. But yeah, so I appreciate that suggestion. Any other questions on this segment at all?
Elaine, this is just a, a process question, because I know there's about 65 people are listening and tuning into this session. We are a little over an hour into it. At what point the public will get an opportunity to comment on any of those? I just want to, you know, be visible for them as well in this process.
Yeah, so when we finish the item, we will welcome public comment for, for sure. And whoever is interested, you know, we'll go through our usual process. They can raise their hand, and the clerk will call on them. So we absolutely welcome that input, and I'm glad to hear there are 65 people that are tuning in. It's great to hear.
That's good. And my other question about the charges for services. I do see the projected revenues, about $13 million are coming from charges and services. It's about 13%. What percentage is from Parks and Rec? I know it's the majority of the stock is coming from EMS and, you know, ambulance services. If I recall, like, less than $2 million is not even coming from Parks and Rec from all those activities. Is there a way we can get that breakdown, ma'am?
Yes, I can definitely get that for you, but you're right. It's, it's less than $3 million.
Yeah, it's a small number compared to, and even though the number shows big 13%, $13 million, but not from Parks and Rec, that money.
I think we need to also keep in mind that prior to the pandemic, that, that was a much bigger number for Parks and Rec activities. We don't have, we don't have anywhere near the ongoing Parks and Rec activities we had right, right now by comparison to pre-COVID.
And thank you, Mayor. And, and, you know, Lorraine is doing a tremendous job of trying to keep all this, the program thing that, you know, we relaunched, keep it all going within still very constrained staff. You know, we, we at one point, you know, sent home all of the temporary workers and trying to add them back and trying to do that and make sure the revenue matches up, and it's, it's tricky business for sure.
Yeah.
Elaine, I have a quick question. I just got a text from a resident. So Stacy, going back to the sales tax trend and the projections and all of the work that you do at the consultant. Obviously, because of the pandemic, we know that, that large employers like Intel have maybe a 10th of their workforce on their campus. Everybody else is, is working from home. Are they making any predictions yet about if that trend will continue? Or do, I mean, do we expect to see any rebound in our sales tax if, if those people eventually come back to work and they're going out to lunch at restaurants and all that kind of stuff?
Haven't specifically spoken to our employees that are just here during the day. In other economic projections that I've seen, they're, they are still projecting that people would come back and not be out indefinitely. And how that factors into our restaurants, we haven't received that from the sales tax consultant, but I could see if they can do something like that. Actually, our restaurants have recovered pretty well.
Yeah, and I'm just using that as an example, but I guess just in general, is this the new normal and how much of the fact that people are teleworking now rather than going into an office? Is that, how much of that's going to affect that?
Sure. And I, and part of the new normal is just the convenience of the online shopping and that not shifting back, regardless of where they work.
Yeah. And the workplace, I, you know, I, I mean, Councilmember Keen, I'm sure you've read the same articles I have. You know, lots of, you know, discussion and analysis about it's now become kind of a commodity to be traded in the workplace world of, you know, whether you'll let me work remotely or not. And, you know, that's become quite the, you know, the, the benefit most are, are looking for. Some players are starting to look at things very differently. And yeah, that does affect things like, you know, dry cleaners and, you know, all the, all the, all the stuff that goes into making yourself, you know, ready to come out of your family room and go into an office building is, is, adds to the sales tax picture. So we, we shall see.
Also, even, you know, conferences, there are many conferences prior to COVID. And, you know, are people, you know, having conferences in hotels and where it supports hotels and shopping and restaurants? That's an interesting trend, too.
That's right on, Councilwoman Rodriguez. You know, some of us were able to, you know, go in person to the League of California Cities, you know, conference down in Sacramento, and it was, I hadn't been in an in-person conference in so long, almost forgot what that felt like. But, you know, we've all been a part of those where you, you descend on a city, you go to, you can learn a lot of great stuff, and then you go exploring around and spending your, you know, your, your, your money. And, and those kind of things are fewer and far, far between now. It's, it's just very easy to pivot to, well, let's just do this virtually. And then that just sucks away all those opportunities for cities, you know, that are hosting them. Okay, any other questions or comments on this section? I think you're muted, YK. I can't tell if you're saying, perhaps saying something.
Yeah, I am. Thank you. Do we have more potential options? I'm going to stop. Otherwise, I have a few more things to ask.
We, we do have more potential options to make through in the presentation, but at your pleasure. If you'd like to ask more questions now or wait for a couple more sections, whatever you prefer.
Yeah, I'll wait for the, you know, remaining potential options and make my comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else saying anything for, at this moment? All right. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Christine Brainard, and she's going to talk to you about economic development as part of the solution picture. And as I mentioned, when I first introduced this item, Christine's presentation was developed in concert in cooperation with Joe Galliardi with the Greater Folsom Partnership. And I want to thank Joe, who is here on the Zoom call, and for his willingness to help and contribute. We realize that these strategies need to be explored in much more depth. This is not an economic development workshop this afternoon. And they also, we also realized they're really part of the city's long game in terms of yielding a consistent revenue stream. You know, it would remain to be seen if they would produce revenue stream, if so, at what level. And it certainly would not happen overnight or next year or even two years from now. You know, it takes development and looking ahead to cultivate those kind of revenue streams. We also realized that almost all the strategies require an infusion of dollars, you know, to potentially yield those important revenues later on. But all that said, we didn't want to leave them out of this important discussion. I want to add that ideally, any strategies in the economic development realm would be based on data and research so that we're being very strategic and targeted in our economic development approach. We could test some of the concepts with community engagement if desired by the council. For example, as part of our outreach, we could ask, hey, you know, a person being interviewed for, you know, what type of businesses or specific names of businesses would you like to see come to our city? So with that, I'll turn it over to Christine to describe some of these strategies. And again, Mr. Galliardi is here and happy to help flesh out more specifics on, on the items that Christine raises.
Thank you, Elaine. Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. I'm Christine Brainard, Communications Director with the City of Folsom. And I'm now serving in a new additional role as Economic Development Liaison. And as our city manager said, we've been working closely with our partners at the Greater Folsom Partnership to explore options for boosting up economic growth in our city, which includes tourism and economic development. So Folsom has a longstanding history of creating and sustaining a strong local economy, thanks in part to our partnership with the Greater Folsom Partnership. Economic development will be an important component as the city plans to address the future funding gap and begins a strategic plan, planning process. We've had preliminary meetings with Joe Galliardi, President and CEO of the Greater Folsom Partnership and Folsom Economic Development Corporation. And these meetings were held to identify economic development priorities. The categories that I'll cover will reflect the vision and guiding principles that are outlined in the city's 2035 general plan. And I'll be speaking those categories in broad brushstrokes. And the categories are intended to be a starting point for future exploration, and Joe's available to answer any questions that might come up today. So next slide, we'll be looking at the economic development categories. First category is to continue to expand retail recruitment to attract sales tax generating revenue and strategically recruit industries, businesses, and jobs that are well suited for Folsom. We look at promoting entrepreneurship and explore the formation of an innovation district, promoting innovation, coworking spaces, and other startup programs. We'll look to assist businesses with workforce development, including the education and training of our community members so they meet the current and future need of our local businesses. Maximizing and activating the city's assets, including increased programming at public facilities, and strengthening and expanding tourism assets and special events. Go to the next slide. Look to identify and prioritize public-private development projects such as the Central Business District and the River District, encouraging public-private partnerships when viable, and continuing to ensure that the city's infrastructure supports the business needs of today as well as into the future. And that would include broadband, EV charging stations, and smart cities technology. We've looked to leverage Folsom's healthcare cluster to attract additional quality development, employment centers, and new high-wage jobs. And then continue to pursue grant funding that supports economic development in Folsom and educating our local business community about grant, programs that are available to them. This is by no means an exhaustive list, but it provides an overview of some of the concepts to consider as we move forward.
Thank you, Christine. And, you know, I want to emphasize, and I think that Joe would agree. I mean, these are things that, you know, that the city has worked in, you know, hand in hand with the Greater Folsom Partnership for many years. These aren't, you know, new, brand-new things that are just, you know, thrown up on a slide. A lot of them, you know, are already happening in different ways and can be seen in the number of, you know, very high-quality projects this city has managed to attract, just even in the last few months, which is exciting. And you could spend a workshop on just one of these, honestly. So, but we wanted to just give you an idea of the types of conversations that Christine and Joe have been having as representatives of, of each agency. Just to, you know, kind of remind you that we, we absolutely have our eyes on this, on that ball. These things will not solve the art funding gap. These things are things that a very lucky city manager, you know, 20 years from now will reap the benefits of, you know, as we make those important investments. But we just didn't want to, we felt uncomfortable just leaving them off, you know, even though they're longer term because it's part of our future. And, you know, and we, we ought to be looking at, you know, spending money to make money. And, you know, and we ought to be looking at, you know, spending money to make money in the future. And that's, that's part of those on that pile of things we really ought to be spending money on and committing dollars to. So we point that these things out for that reason. So if, please let me know at this point if you have any questions for, I'd say Joe would really take the lead in terms of specifics in these areas. And Joe or Christine on the, in this segment.
Elaine, this is Mike Kozlowski. I, I just want to kind of emphasize and echo what you just said. The really, really good work of the Folsom Economic Development Corporation over the years and city staff and our current and former, former city councils has helped to build the very dynamic, thriving economic community that we have here in Folsom. And we'll continue to do that into the future, you know, using these strategies. But you cannot, generally speaking, grow your way out of a deficit situation. So as successful as we may be at all of these things, the fact that we are super successful thus far should just make everybody realize that these are table stakes for high performing cities like ourselves. And they're not the way to help us with our, our discussion of how to close the funding gap in the city's budget.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kozlowski. I completely agree with that. And, you know, we are, you know, I said it before, but we offer quite a product here, you know? There's, there's a reason why, you know, Dignity Health comes in and makes a major investment here. You know, there's, there's reasons why, you know, big, big corporations are not only interested in doing business here, but their employees are saying, we want to, we want you to do business there because we want to actually live there. It's a very compelling product here that's been cultivated over years of really, really good decision-making. And we'd like to continue that trend. And that, that takes, that takes some investment. And so we just wanted to kind of keep that on your radar screen. I feel like radar screens like dating me. Keep that on your radar screen for, you know, as, as we, you know, continue this conversation.
Pin it on ways.
Yeah, pin it on ways. That's, I love that. Thank you. So Joe, I know, I think, I believe you're, you, you're a panel, we are on a panelist, have a panelist role. If, is there anything else that you'd like to add in this section?
I wouldn't mind adding a few comments, Elaine. I think what's somewhat exciting about the opportunity to do economic development is to create a vision for what the city wants going forward. Mike's point, it isn't going to happen tomorrow and it's going to take an investment. But having looked at what the city has done to say, we should all be proud of, but it took some vision, right? Somebody said, we need to go after an auto mall, we need to go after a lifestyle center to generate sales tax. The game is changing now where sales tax is generated in a different way because of, you know, people shopping from home, et cetera. So it's an opportunity for the city to talk about what they want to be in the future. Whether they want, you know, an arena, I mean, if you look at other communities, they're talking about what they would like to be in 20 years. And it takes time to do that. And with each of those comes opportunities to generate revenue to the city so that the shortfalls can at least be, you know, somewhat overcome. But it's not going to happen tomorrow. And I would just cite a few examples in working with Christine, based on Councilmember Aquino's comments about we should break up the city into zones. We kind of went through zones to try to figure out, is that a way of approaching what kind of amenities or what kind of features to be done in different areas of the city? With the ways to interrupt people and what could generate additional revenue. Because we are the arm that handles tourism, I think there's incredible opportunity with tourism to become more of a destination. We have a lot of amenities here. But for instance, if you think about tourism from the standpoint that if you attract people, they're going to, when staying at a hotel, there's a transit occupancy tax and there's a likelihood that they're going to spend anywhere from $50 to $100 per room night on shopping and eating. And that's all taxable sales, right? So there's a multiplier effect of attracting people to your community. And when you start to reach a certain threshold of, of occupancy, you start to see that more hotels are built, more amenities built, conference space, et cetera. As you know, there's hotels planned associated with both Big Indy and UC Davis. And, you know, so I think the opportunity, just kind of on a small scale is for tourism. Because if we strengthen our brand and we strengthen the amenities that we have, it has the effect of generating more tax to the city. So that's just one example, but Christine and I have spent a lot of time on different ideas, public, private partnerships of various ways that aren't certainly going to bridge $20 million, but I think we've got to chip away at it and budget it. After answering the questions on, we have a whole, we could take the whole day on it. And I hope that at some point, the city wants to focus on economic development ideas to pursue in the future.
Very well said, Joe. Thank you. Any comments or questions on these, these concepts or just economic development in general, anything for?
I have a question for Joe. So Joe, are we looking at anything right now that will, that will have a long-term tax generating revenue capability?
Well, you know, I know that we've been approached by someone that was looking at, you know, an arena. Not like building one, but you know, a facility like that. We had a study done on conference center space. And while it doesn't generate revenue itself, it generates room nights, which generates revenue. I think there's, we've been on some of our study missions where we come back with where other communities have built facilities that help generate a nice state. I think those are the kinds of things. When it comes to activating retail space and attracting revenue generating, kind of the trend in retail is that it's active, right? So I would cite the example of what the skating rink does for those startups to bring out season. Or what the Harris Center does for those restaurants and businesses out there when the Harris Center is booming. Those are the kinds of things that are kind of catalysts or, or anchors to help drive the economy. Those are the kind of ideas that I think we need to explore further. And I would also add one of the unique things about Folsom, the Folsom's ability to have events if people want to come to, from outside the area, which then stay in our, in our rooms and generate those taxes also.
Yeah, and that was some of what I was referring to earlier is that because we have an amazing city with amazing people here, they're, they have an expectation of, you know, the, the kind of, you know, facilities they'd like to see in the, you know, especially kind of event space, you know, of what would be available here, not only within Folsom, but people looking to visit Folsom and trying to be sure we have that available, that we're creating those opportunities as a very important investment and conversation and eventually investment.
I just have one more question for Joe. So I, you know, I look at the space that, you know, the, the old Office Max space, Sony's Bidwell, next to Petco. Is there any, you know, are any cities doing anything specific that would be tax generating that could attract a business into a large space like that?
So there, there are some, you know, they're calling it repurposing. And part of that is looking at retail space or shopping centers and looking at how it can be repurposed. Everything from the existing buildings to also looking at the parking lot and saying, from part of the parking lot because, you know, there's not as many parking spaces needed. So continue development occur on that. So we've seen housing go into it and seeing reuse for like warehouse storage space. That particular property, I think Bed Bath &amp; Beyond is going into that space. So there are people that are moving around, but that's not a net gain to us because they're just relocating within the city. So.
Right. And it's going to leave the Bed Bath &amp; Beyond space open over on our point.
Right. So there are some trends and things of reuse. I think we've probably seen down in Carmichael where they kind of had a food court built into it with so many startups in there. And I think there's a bunch of different ideas out there for repurposing.
Thank you.
And getting back to, I think it was Councilmember Aquino's comment, you know, that this applies to office space, obviously also, you know, there's, there's these companies that had these, you know, like a whole floor of a building or maybe a whole building. And they've been out there, employees now remote and maybe they're just going to be permanently remote. And so, you know, potential reuse opportunities for office space as well is an interesting conversation. Anything else on this topic? Any questions or comments?
This is YK. My comment is very close to my colleague, you know, Rodriguez was asking, but mine is a little bit generic. Christine and Joe, just like Citrus Heights, the, the Sunrise Mall, you know, they were redoing, redeveloping. They're anticipating every year $5 million or up to $100 million next 20 years. So they were anticipating the growth and redesigning those. Anything in, from our economic development perspective, such a things are coming at the big scale?
So you mean like redeveloping a particular area?
Yeah.
I think that's why Councilmember Aquino wanted to look at the central business district. To look at what could be done possibly for repurposing or reuse in that area. But right now, you know, I don't think there's any area that has suffered quite the way the Sunrise Mall has. You know, it was built 40 years ago and it was suffering a little bit of the aging. Folsom's fortunate that, I mean, other than, you know, maybe some, a relook at the central business district. So we can see what maybe could be done there. But nothing like the Sunrise Mall.
Yeah, that's a very different kind of situation than you would find in Folsom. I do agree, we, there are some areas to revitalize and I think the central business district is a very important one. But we don't have that obvious, you know, thank goodness, you know, we don't have this big B in the sitting in the middle of the city that's just vacant and has been struggling for decades, long past its heyday. That, that doesn't exist. What we could really benefit for from is some polishing and rearranging and, you know, and engaging and investing in pedestrian friendly. And, you know, kind of making people, places like the central business district, you know, more desirable.
And I think I just want, I just want to remind everybody that that's exactly what we were talking about doing at the beginning of the Great Recession, which pretty much coincided with redevelopment agencies going away. That was going to be the next major project, redevelopment. And nothing ever happened because redevelopment vanished and the economy went in the tank.
Yeah, and that's obviously part of this equation as well. You know, there, there did used to be a nice pot for these sorts of things and, and that doesn't exist anymore. And we've had to adapt to that as a city, both to our organization and just the city as a whole. But Mayor How's absolutely right. That was always intended to be kind of the next step. But I still think it ought to be the next step. It's just, you know, have to figure out how to, how to achieve it with the dollars and incentivize the owners to do, you know, to engage in public, private partnerships, to create just a, you know, a different type of more attractive space.
Elaine, I have a question about land. Does the city have any land that we can consider now that can possibly be, you know, sold and rezoned? That can generate tax revenue? Is, is that something that maybe we should consider? And I don't even know if there, I know there are a couple of pieces throughout the city, but I don't know.
I don't have it, I don't have it right in front of me. I mean, we, we actually have a map that shows all of the little, and what we have, Councilwoman Rodriguez, in general, is a lot of weird remnants that are left over from developments. And, and we, you know, there, there are occasional, you know, we'll, a private, a private property owner who lives right next to a little parcel we have. And we don't have any real use to, of it, you know, we will come to the city council and say, you know, do we want to engage in a sales agreement with them for that portion. But these are, we don't have like swaths of land. I mean, you know, we had the former library site, you know, which I know you've been plugged into that discussion. But scanning the city, there are little pockets that we've kind of, we've been talking about as, as department heads for, you know, perhaps very contained, you know, transitional housing, you know, they're relatively small spaces that, you know, could, you could squeeze a little housing in there. But they're not big, to be honest. But I'd be happy to make sure that map is refreshed and show everybody because we do have it all kind of laid out of what we own. And, you know, we do know what we have, you know, for sure.
And Joe, you can correct me, Joe G., you can correct me if I'm wrong. But the last, you know, large piece of land that I remember the city actually owning is the location that is now Folsom High School. Didn't we own that?
I don't, I don't recall the city owning that. I know they worked on a deal between the land owner and the school district, but I don't recall them owning that. I could be wrong.
Yeah. So I think the, the short answer is no, there's nothing big enough to, to make any significant difference. We just don't own any swaths of land unless, unless it's parkland and.
I think, I think the city has a vision, they can, they can help reach out to private owners.
It's not something that.
Do a certain kind of development, you know.
Place between the city of Folsom and the central district.
It looks like we've, we located, we've been texting a couple of us here and we've been able to locate the, the map. And so maybe if Stacy gets a moment, she could, she could pop it off her email and share that for the council's interest or we can just share it later. I think it looks like she was going to try to do that, which is great. You know, we, we own, I mean, we own our current courtyard. You know, there are, we, you know, there are places that we envision a transition in the future to like our courtyard will eventually live south of 50 and we have the land, you know, set aside for that. And so eventually, you know, yeah, we own that land and that would, could be part, would be part of a, you know, a river district conversation. But that's, that's probably about the most, you know, the, the biggest piece I can think of that's, you know, pretty meaningful. So gosh, I don't know if you're going to even be able to see this very well, but this is the map that I was talking about. And so it's showing, if you can, I mean, I had to put my glasses on, but the, the red is showing vacant city owned property. And you can kind of see that there are just little tiny red bits everywhere. They're the ones that you have to look a little more closely to see, not everywhere, but they're, they're around the map. The green are our parks. And then the yellow is just, is, it says, it's marked as other city owned property. But it's really like I said, I would call it remnants, for lack of a better word, that are just, they didn't neatly fit into a development. And they were just, you know, they just ended up in the city's hands.
And looking at them, it looks like that's all open space.
But yellow.
Yeah.
Yeah, when I'm looking at, that's probably tracking, it looks like, yes, you're right, it's tracking like the Oak Avenue.
Yep. That looks to me like it's all open space.
I think so. I'm not quite trusting my elderly eyes at this point, but I think, I think that that's, that's probably correct. So yeah, so there's, there's the map in case you're interested and we'd be happy to also shoot everybody a copy of that later. So I hope that's helpful.
So would it benefit us to look at the value of some of these little remnants and see if anybody would be interested in them?
We can, we can do that. Some of the remnants, we, we can. I mean, if that's a desire of the council, 100%, yes, we can do that. I do know that several of them like will be contacted sometimes by residents and they'll be like, well, I just want, I know you guys own this piece and we just want this piece. And what they don't realize is it has some, you know, key water infrastructure on it or, you know, something that it is, it's our best interest to keep it. Because, you know, we, we need it, we need to be able to maintain it, we need to be able to access it. And we don't necessarily want it in private hands. But I don't know if that applies to all of them and we'd be happy to do a scan of that. Any other questions for Joe or for Christine? Okay, so Stacy, would you mind switching back to the core PowerPoint? Thank you. So as, as you all know, Christine, her, her, her day job is Communications Director for the City of Folsom. And she's also taken on this role of Economic Development Liaison. And so this next section for, is going to also be Christine. But it's going to focus on some community engagement strategies we're proposing to make sure our community is part of the conversation as to telling us where their priorities and values are, as to what we provide as a city and also their appetite for some of the solutions we've discussed. So she's going to take you through some of the public engagement tools she imagines in the, in the arsenal with her expertise.
Thank you, Elaine. City staff is recommending a comprehensive and multi-platform public outreach and engagement effort. And it would involve our residents, businesses and other community members and stakeholders to allow us to prioritize our city services. to allow us to prioritize our city services and develop options to align our service levels with our city's revenues. So moving to the next slide, our approach would be two-pronged and that would be to educate our community about our city's finances and also seek meaningful and well-informed community input about those city services and what the community's priorities are. This recommended approach would ensure transparent, two-way communication, ensuring that our community is well-informed about our city's budget and also that the community has multiple opportunities to provide meaningful feedback. This feedback would then allow the city council and staff to make budgetary decisions based on the community's needs and priorities. So moving into the next slide, our community engagement plan would begin with planning and formal research. We recommend working with a consultant to conduct formal research through statistically valid polls to determine the community's opinions on city resources, amenities, programs and services. And that statistically valid polling would allow the council to gauge a majority opinion and not only hear from a vocal minority. This feedback would be valuable in determining your strategy for closing the budget gap and providing new public opinion to help inform those decisions. Our comprehensive program would educate the community and gather input from as many as possible through multiple platforms. And we're recommending that we use a wide variety of tools to educate and engage with our community, ranging from traditional tactics like the printed mailers in our newsletter to the latest technology engagement tools. So these tactics would include a dedicated informational website, logo and headline, social media, videos, direct mail, printed and electronic newsletters, local advertising, electronic billboards, direct, direct mail, utility bill inserts, community forums and presentations and media relations. Moving to the next slide, we are recommending using an online engagement tool in order to communicate financial information to our community and also get feed, informed feedback on service level priorities. We're recommending a tool called Balancing Act because it's an easy to use online simulation that lets the community better understand the city council and staff budgetary decisions that are made. And it also lets the residents see the information that the council uses to make those budget decisions. The program offers an online simulation of the general fund budget and users can share input on their service level priorities and also rank the service levels most important to them. They can also make real-time adjustments to the city's services to close the budget gap. And there's also a tool that allows users to estimate their taxes and see where every dollar goes. It's a popular tool used by cities nationwide, including Phoenix, Denver, San Jose. And locally, we're seeing the city of Roseville using this public engagement tool. We're also recommending the, the tool called Flashvote. And through Flashvote, we would get statistically valid public input within 48 hours through one to two minute brief surveys. Flashvote gets large samples of residents to answer professionally designed questions frequently and, and quickly. And the public can vote on any topic in just a couple of minutes from any communication device. We're recommending this tool because it allows us to quickly gather community input on specific priorities. And because the results are statistically valid, we know we're hearing from the viewpoints of the majority of our community members. We want to give our residents and other stakeholders input, input opportunities of differing time and commitments and depths. Some residents might be more receptive to an extensive mail survey, while others want, want to still provide input, but only have a couple of minutes. We're trying to provide as many opportunities as possible to engage and inform our community. Flashvote is also another tool used by local governments. And locally, we're seeing Placer County, South Lake Tahoe and Roseville using Flashvote to survey their residents. So in closing, our recommended approach would reach the Folsom community through a wide variety of tools and tactics multiple times. And we believe this will result, will result in our community being better informed about the city's budget with a lot of opportunities to provide meaningful and informed feedback to the council. And this feedback would help the council plan for future budgets and help the city move forward to a more financially secure future based on the community's needs and priorities.
Thank you, Christine, I appreciate that. And before I ask for kind of questions on that segment, I wanted to back up a bit. It did occur to me that we, we have what's called a Y property, Councilman Rodriguez, when you talk about, you know, swathes of land that we own, that we could activate and W Y E is how we refer to it. I'm going to ask our public works director, Mark Rackafam, to describe that property because it has been talked about as perhaps a site, for example, you know, museum or as Councilmember Rodriguez and I were emailing about earlier, as we learned that the University of Beer is going into the IHOP location. You know, we were talking about that kind of concept of people riding their bikes between breweries very safely, of course. But, you know, kind of integrating a location with a nearby trail to achieve that kind of, you know, to kind of activate a site. So Mark, maybe you could describe where that is for the benefit of others that don't, that don't know and kind of anything else you know along those lines.
Yeah, absolutely. So the Y property is generally bounded by Bidwell Street on the south, Folsom Boulevard slash, what is that, the tiny little street, I think it's Oakdale on the west. And then there's a, a trailer park or mobile home park just to the north that actually fronts onto Natoma Street and onto Oakdale. The site is encumbered somewhat by, there is a historical property there. I think it was a station master's house. And there is a spur of the Sacramento Placerville Transportation Corridor rail that, that forms the eastern boundary of the Y.
Mark, I think it's important to point out that I believe, and we can't get confirmation on this, but I believe that the station master's house is on the, the state register.
Yeah, I believe it is. That's why I wanted to highlight that that was a historical structure.
Okay.
And we can confirm whether or not it, it is on the historic register. But nevertheless, there are several portions of that site that are under city control and are not encumbered by rail or historical amenities. And so it might be a property worth further evaluation.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Any questions on that? Sorry to kind of go back a section, but any questions on the Y property? Okay, thank, thank you, Mark. So returning to Christine, thank you for that presentation on the public engagement plan. Does anybody have any questions about the, kind of the tools and tactics that she was proposing to bring our community into the conversation? Any questions or comments? Okay, so with that, you know, I think you, I appreciate all the questions and comments as we've moved through. But that, that concludes our staff presentation and we invite any additional questions or comments now that you've kind of seen the broad overview. And we also seek your direction as to next steps and respectfully ask for your consensus direction on answering some questions that I identified. And the first one is, and they're laid out for you on the screen here, is does the council seek additional information in the form of a staff report back at this time on the potential solutions we identified? And if so, which ones? Second question, are there potential additional solutions that you didn't hear this afternoon? And you wish you had heard or you'd like to hear that you want to identify and you would like staff to explore? And then finally, we're asking for your direction to begin to engage our community, including statistically valid polling done by a consultant. And the purpose of this is to collect the data that will advise the council on community priorities as you move forward with your strategy to close the budget gap. The sooner we begin this, the more information you will have to help inform your decisions. And so my question is generally, do we have the green light to move ahead with that proposed community engagement process, either in part or in whole? And so I just opened it up to your questions in general and first, and then also I will, I would like to kind of, kind of poll you or look for consensus on an answer to each of these three questions if I could.
So I'd like to have, if the council members have any other questions of staff, that'd be great. And do he, how many people from, from John Q Public do we have that are actually on the call or watching this? I know Y K said there were 65, but it looked like it was mostly staff to me.
You have 44 attendees from the public right now, but there are no hands raised. So if anybody would like to ask a question of the council or make comments at this time, please go ahead and raise your hand and then we can call on you.
I have something that I, that I would love to see.
Yes.
And it's related to salaries, like one of the questions that comes up often is, you know, salary pay versus, you know, the region and, and I would personally love to see salaries, you know, that from maybe a certain level. I mean, we have our city manager, directors, now we have some middle, middle management level in between. You know, years of service, years of, years of, of service in their current position, their salary. And I know that there's a benefited position, salary and other, other types of things, but to include all the other information. And then in comparison to other similar roles in the region, is that possible?
Yeah, we do that, you know, we do that as part of our labor negotiations, to be honest, you know, as, as we, as we start. And I know you've been through the negotiations, for example, we just finished negotiating with our wonderful, you know, Folsom police officers. And, and the, the first step in these negotiations is, is comp studies, is, is taking a look at, you know, where we are versus where we are with other, that, that class, those classifications, whether it's dispatcher or police officer, you know, compared to the region. We do it, you know, on all kinds of other positions as well, not only as part of labor negotiations, negotiations, but just trying to make sure that we're keeping our finger on the pulse of like, are we still competitive? I think I can pretty safely say that we're, we are not at the top in terms of salaries. We, we strive for that, you know, we're kind of ideally looking for that high middle. We don't want to be the highest and a hundred percent don't want to be the lowest. We're trying to hang in there on that high middle, but that's honestly part of this overall challenge is, is trying to keep up with that growth and continue to be in it, you know, dollars do motivate people. It's not everything that motivates people to come to work for a city, but it's part of what motivates them. But yes, we, we have a number of classification and compensation studies. I don't know that we have one for every position in the city, but we, you know, we, we have quite a few of them. And I could kind, I could work with our human resources manager to remind myself, you know, how current the ones we have are and maybe provide it, you know, just a sampling. Is that helpful of just, you know, where, where it falls? Is that kind of what you're hoping for?
That would be good, yes.
Okay.
And also, and also delving into overtime, you know, I know that overtime, we have, you know, unexpected overtime. That's just a natural part of running a business or organization. But then there's, you know, there's overtime even in fire where some of the overtime gets reimbursed and some of it doesn't. And the one that doesn't, what, you know, I, I mean, I would be really curious to look at some of that information when it comes to OT and the impact it has on salaries.
Yeah, that's a tough one, Councilman Rodriguez, and you, you, you're picking the ones that, that, you know, are on my worry list, you know, quite a bit. Yes, we run a 24/7 operation in terms of public safety, we must, and that is, that's, you know, in, in both fire and PD. Those are also happen to be professions that, you know, injuries happen unfortunately. And not to single out police and fire, you know, but we cannot predict when somebody is going to get hurt. Lately, you know, we are, do our best to, you know, work with our staff to keep them as safe as possible from COVID-19. But COVID-19 has nailed our organization recently. And so then you have people who are out because maybe they don't even have symptoms, but they've tested positive. And so they have to be home on that quarantine period, or maybe their kid has COVID, COVID, you know, and they have, in their home from schools, they have to be home. So suddenly we have all of this overtime that, as you say, is not reimbursable. It's not related to a fire, but there are a hundred percent valid reasons to have overtime. And it's not particularly predictable. We can predict that we'll always have it, we're going to always have overtime because it's a 24/7 operation. But this last year, for example, and maybe Chief Casano can speak to this a little bit, has been like in fire, really a challenge with the overtime, just because it's just been a combination of unexpected injuries and, you know, and, and just, just stuff happening, you know, to, to hardworking people. But it, you know, it does add up, but those people are still on the staff. And then you need to bring someone to backfill them and then you're paying them overtime to do that because they've already done their regular shift, you know, so it's, it is, it's expensive and it's a challenge, you know.
I, I think it's also important to note, Rosari, that's, that's a valid question, but over the, over my years on the council, there have been many times when we negotiated with both a police and fire because the, the total amount of overtime is, is always going to be higher in those two departments. And I think you'll find that the total of overtime in police and fire nationwide, that we are, we are not unusual. That's, that's what happens everywhere. We have, we have tried to, to find ways to reduce the amount of overtime by changing the, the way the schedules work. And whatever we've done, we've done a number of tweaks. It never seems to make a dramatic difference in the overtime that we end up paying for public safety. It's just the, it's unfortunately, it's just the nature of the beast.
It's the nature of the work. And then, like I said, you, well, you throw a virus on top of that and gosh, you know, it's, 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 overtime has been a struggle.
Yeah.
And, and, and it's not $20 million a year.
The other request I have, Elaine, is there are certain job perks that are maybe, you know, I mean, I would call them as non-essentials, but there are certain perks that, that I'd like to look at. And that's at the last budget, there was, you know, like there was cell phones that are paid and vehicles that are paid. And, and those are job perks, you know, I, I worked in healthcare at a time when my cellphone was paid. And then somewhere 10 years ago, they said, oh, well, you're going to have a cellphone anyway. So that perk was taken away. But I, I'd like to look at a list of those kind of job perks and the cost that it has to, to, to the city. And I, and I don't know what exactly is entailed of that, but I, to me, it was vehicle pay and cellphone pay. And are there other type of similar benefits that we, we should consider at this point?
Yeah, so looking at, you know, the ones that we can control, the easiest are the unrepresented employees, the ones that are, you know, not within labor unions, where of course that's negotiated at a table as part of a very prescribed process. But if you look at the employees that are unrepresented, yeah, we can absolutely provide a list of the kinds of things that are included in total compensation. And you're right, they include technology reimbursements that are intended to help offset, you know, wifi and cell phones because, you know, certain employees are expected to be available and reachable 24/7. So it becomes a job related expense. Car allowances to pay for, you know, that is part of their job, they're going to be driving around or they're going to be doing this and that, that might be built into how they're compensated. There are employees that have been compensated to receive their college education, you know, that, that offset, you know, the, the cost of doing that because it was seen as a benefit for the city. So we can again, give you a flavor of those kind of things. I will say that we look at all those things, except for maybe it's something like college education because that's more of a one time, like it goes away after they complete the degree. But when we look at these compensation studies, we not only look at base salary, but we look at total compensation. And that, and that includes all those categories. And that's where we seek to be sort of middle, high middle, you know, we're looking at all of that. And so if you start kind of picking it apart, suddenly you're slipping into low middle or low. And, you know, and then you're maybe not attracting the employees you would hope to attract, you know. But we can give you, I'd be happy to give you a flavor of what, what those look like right now. But it's mostly the unrepresented employees, it would be, yeah, so. Any other questions generally or specifically on the presentation?
I do have it, but I rather want to hear from the residents. I think I saw there are two hands raising there, yeah, have been patient.
So I will, I will turn it over to the clerk and she will take it from here with those raising their hands.
Yeah.
Hey, we do have a few people who have raised their hands to speak. And just as a reminder, just as in regular meetings, you will each have three minutes to speak. We will give you a warning when you hit one minute. So first to speak will be Loretta Hedinger and Loretta will be followed by Robert Goss. So Loretta, when you're ready, go ahead.
I wanted to confirm for you that the station master's house is not just on the California Register, but the National Register of Historic Places. So anything you would consider in that? So anything you would consider in that vicinity, it's important to maintain the ambiance of the area in relation to the Station Masters House.
Thank you, Loretta.
And my other question is, I'm relating this workshop to the other work that is going on to identify the council districts. And I am concerned about the fact that this the existing budget, the pie sections, do not identify the needs for investment in the historic district. And yet there's going to be a council member elected this fall who needs to represent that district. So I'm wondering how the community engagement process can be modified to address questions that go beyond the pie sections of the existing budget.
Right, we have, I mean, Reta, we have not yet put together a list of the questions. We haven't even determined what that process is going to be. So, you know, thank you for adding that, but we're kind of getting off what this agenda is.
Well, I just want to ask Christine then to consider this sort of question.
Thank you. We will include a variety of ways to gather public feedback from the community, also including open-ended questions through our website and through our other surveys. So we'll make sure to include open-ended questions so our community members can expand on what their needs and priorities are.
Thank you.
Loretta, does that conclude your comments?
Yes, I'm sure I will. I and Heritage Preservation League will continue to be involved in this process.
Okay, thank you, Loretta.
Thanks.
Okay, our next speaker will be Robert Goss. Go ahead.
Thank you, Krista. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you. Go right ahead.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Miss Madam Mayor and City Council members. I'm very encouraged that this process is being undertaken. And I I want to acknowledge that certainly the the pandemic has been impactful, exhausting, fatiguing, all of those things. And I'm very empathetic to your the council, the committees, commissions, and the staff for how difficult the last couple of years have been. But nevertheless, visionaries continue looking and moving forward. And I want to say that I'm concerned about Folsom losing its place in the region. Beyond the Sacramento as the capital, for the last 20 years, it's always been Roseville or Folsom or Folsom or Roseville as the hotspots of growth, innovation, and the best places to live, not only in the Sacramento region, but in the nation. I worry that Elk Grove, Citrus Heights, Rancho Cordova, and Rockland are all gaining ground on Folsom, while we're also Folsom, excuse me, while Roseville has pulled away somewhat. I stay abreast of city issues, and it feels like Folsom has been treading water lately. So moving forward, in addition to the public engagement goals, I'd like to add a couple of things. In the third bullet regarding engagement, the engagement plan and educating the community, I think, and you did a little bit of it today, educating and documenting what has been done in the past from a cost control standpoint is vital. There will be naysayers and trolls that just say, you know, cut the cut the budget, cut the staff, you know, et cetera, et cetera. That isn't going to work. I I've been there, as you as you all well know. But documenting that and making that obviously very public, I think, will help. And those that are constructively engaged in the process can refer to that documentation to stiff-arm the naysayers and the trolls. In the fifth bullet regarding the kind of community people want to live in, one of the questions we need to ask is is what do we want our residents or visitors to say about Folsom? You know, we've used distinctive by nature for some time, which is which is obvious, I think it's accurate, but it isn't sort of a something that somebody would repeat. I think we want people to say Folsom is the most fun side, fun city to live in. Folsom is the most fun city to visit. I think there's potentials there. Maybe we want the new moniker to be, instead of distinctive by nature, as America's most fun small city. Our regional competitor cities are doing some amazing things, just to name a few. Rancho Cordova is doing the Mills Crossing Civic Center. Citrus Heights, I think YK mentioned it, the Sunrise Mall specific plan was approved last November for redevelopment. That will that will just very impactfully change Citrus Heights. Rockland recently opened the Quarry Adventure Park and now is moving on to the Sunset Whitney Recreation Area. Elk Grove has is constructing a casino and expanded civic center, continued investment in its Old Town and the Sacramento Zoo. Really? Did you did you know that the Sacramento Zoo has a very strong chance of moving to Elk Grove? Those are visionary ideas. Don't get me wrong.
Just to let you know, sorry to interrupt you, your three minutes are up.
Oh, I didn't get a warning.
I know, I couldn't break in.
Sorry. Can I finish, please? It'll be short. There are substantial things happening here into here too in Folsom. I don't I won't go over them. You all know them well, as do I. But I think there are opportunities that we we should be accelerating. The River District and the Corpier redevelopment, the Johnny Cash Art Trail, completion of the Elder Order Trail as a Class One Bike Trail, a national level museum such as the Big House Prison Museum, cooperation with state parks and joint enhancement of Lake Natoma, master planning the 800 contiguous acres of the future open space in Folsom Ranch as a regional park and attraction. Evaluation of unique opportunities for city-owned land, you've talked about that. And we have the potential to be talked about in the same breath as Bend, Oregon, or Boulder, Colorado, or Asheville, North Carolina, North Carolina. But to do so, we must be bold. Don't be afraid to be bold. For example, instead of doing just a master plan for the Central Business District, do a specific plan that establishes a true new vision and policy and zoning framework for development of the business district. Say what you want about council members Jack Kip and Ernie Sheldon, but the thing that they had in common was that they were bold. I encourage you to be the best of Jack and Ernie as you guide the city. You've got the foundation in the General Plan 2035 vision. Use it. Thank you very much. I'll stop there.
Thanks. Thanks for your comments, Robert. And going back to your earlier comment about documenting or providing information about what we did and how we got to this point, I agree with you that we have to have that information available, because otherwise, the only the only place where that information lives is me, you, Joe Galliardi, Bob Holdrenus, and those of us that Steve Miklos, Andy, those of us that lived through it. So we know that we cannot cut our way out of this. As Elaine said, we have cut our way to the bone already. And I think there's, you know, again, without all of that information coming simply from those of us who experienced it firsthand. And the other thing that I just want to add to your commentary is that a reminder, the city of Elk Grove is not building a casino. The Indian, the Indian tribe is building the casino. And many of those other amenities in Roseville and Rockland and Citrus Heights, to go back to what we talked about, you know, about an hour and a half ago, that's all being funded by the sales tax increase that were enacted in those communities. So just keep that in the back of your mind.
Thanks, Carrie.
Okay, your next request to speak is from Bruce Klein. Bruce, go ahead. Can you set your timer for three minutes? Bruce, you're still muted.
Bruce, we think you're still muted if you're hearing us.
Ah, the old mute button filibuster.
Are there other speakers, Krista, that maybe we could come back to Mr. Klein when he's?
There are not.
Okay. Bruce, we cannot.
If any chance you you called in, you want to hit star six to unmute yourself if you're on the phone.
Robert, can you send Bruce to text and tell him to unmute himself?
I was just about to do that. I think he might just be having some connection issues.
I I could have done it too, but I was too lazy to look for his number on my phone.
I'll text him right now.
Yeah.
I don't think this will be a surprise. I think he can hear us, but. All right, I sent him a text. We'll give him a few moments here.
Yeah, I'm going to try promoting him to a panelist and see if that helps.
Okay, he's calling me, so he can come and say.
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to be super like newfangled about this. Bruce is on my iPhone, and I'm going to hold it up to my computer, and Bruce is going to speak.
All right, Bruce, you still got three minutes.
Mayor, members of the council, I hope you can hear me.
We can hear you.
She's unmuted, so I'm not that technologically challenged, but not really sure what was up with that. So I'm glad to follow Robert Goss. I liked a lot of the comments that he made. I appreciated some of the questions that were being asked by some of the council members. It my my first question, not to be answered in this forum, but as you're moving forward, explain why we receive less COVID dollars? And if there's, you know, remedies to pursue that and if we are pursuing those remedies? Next point is sales tax. The city has already seen a sales tax measure fail. And in my mind, the reason that that failed was that the residents were skeptical about what, you know, a general sales tax would be utilized for. And if we're not looking at a higher threshold and trying to do some sort of very specific, you know, targeting, you know, it'll fail again unless this kind of engagement that you are talking about, and I really am encouraged by moving forward in this process. But, I mean, I think a very, very robust engagement of what the issues are and then what the city envisions doing with those revenues, not just simply, well, we need more money, because that will not sell, in my opinion, irrespective of maybe, you know, colors are changing from, you know, reds to purples. The reality is, I think Folsom is still going to be an anti-tax town. To me, the question really is what does our future look like? And I don't believe that the city has done strategic planning in a number of years. I can recall being in city strategic planning sessions, which I thought were very, very valuable. And they set, the council set the priorities that it wanted the staff to pursue. And I can still remember to this day, Carrie Howell talking about, you know, Johnny Cash Trail. And I've said this in other public meetings and how, you know, we want to look to be, you know, an international destination. And in many respects, you know, that has come true, although the fulfillment of the whole project isn't there. But I think that part of this process needs to be a strategic planning session where the council is is engaging the public, engaging experts, and looking at the things like Councilmember Aquino has addressed on a number of occasions, the Central Business District, and what are we going to do with the things that we have available to us? And to sort of parrot some of the things that Robert talked about is, all right, what is the vision going forward? Because we have to have a vision that the residents will buy into in order for a sales tax measure to pass. I appreciate.
Sorry to interrupt you. Just to let you know, you're at your three minutes. Sorry.
Okay, well, just if I can just make one more quick point, I appreciate you talking about the Y property. I think there are other properties. There's property down on Bidwell. You can look at some of those. The city attorney will probably talk to you about, you know, what has to happen relative to housing on those kinds of properties. But I do think that it's important to be looking at all of the opportunities for potential sales of property, but also looking at potential rentals of city property too, and how you can pull, continue to pull in additional revenues there. Thank you very much. And again, I really appreciate this process, and I hope it'll be a very robust one going forward.
And I'll and I'll just, I'll just add to to Bruce's comments that, yes, those, the last time we had that strategic planning process, if I remember correctly, was at the library.
Yeah.
And that, assuming that my colleagues agree that we should move forward and have a an effort or at least an exploration of possibility of the sales tax, that that strategic planning should be a significant part of that process, that we identify how much money we think we can raise with the sales tax increase and what we're going to spend it on, in addition to the fact that some of that money would need to go toward filling the existing budget gaps. Because I think we're all talking about the same thing here, but we've talked about it in different terms, because the focus of this workshop is closing that economic gap.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Howell. And if I could just kind of back my way up through some of Mr. Klein's comments in terms of exploring our, you know, why we didn't get the ARPA allocation that we were originally promised. There was an incredibly comprehensive effort on my part, on then there, Mike Kozlowski's part, Vice Mayor Sarah Keno's part, much working with our federal lobbyists. In the end, we were categorized as what's called a nonentitlement city because of the way we receive CDBG funds. And that is, that just kind of doomed us to a different category and and resulted in a lower calculation due to the criteria they use to calculate how much each city would get. So early promises were apparently incorrect. And so we, but we, I just wanted to assure you that we explored every possible avenue at all levels to try to get back to that 15.3. And it was, it has been declared that it is impossible and not not within the scope of the Federal Treasury to to change the guidance from the Biden administration. As far as sales tax measure, the previous one failing and needing a robust engagement process, that's that's exactly what we're proposing to, you know, to engage with our community. I I do feel like the last time, this was before the ballots, there was not the kind of unity that one would hope for. It was, it just, I don't, I don't think there was a cohesive effort, and I don't think people fully understood what it would benefit. These are different times, and so these are different conversations to have. And then your comment about strategic planning, this is the first step toward the development of a strategic plan. That's exactly the purpose of this meeting. It has been a long time since we've had a strategic planning session. We have done those at points in the past, not in any kind of regular way. And I think it's time to start. It's been a long time since there was a a regular emphasis on strategic planning. And I would ideally like to see it integrated throughout the whole organization, which I think sometimes didn't happen. Sometimes it was kind of a meeting in the library, and then that was strategic planning. So I think I think that we need to really integrate it into everything we do. So I appreciate all the and value all those comments, and I agree. Any other question, public comment, Krista?
No, you have no further request to speak.
Okay, so did we open the public hearing at the beginning of this? I can't recall.
This isn't a public hearing.
Yeah, there's no need. So Mayor, with your permission, unless, well, I guess I should just ask if there's, are there any other comments and questions from the council before we go through these, the kind of direction to staff questions?
Elaine, I don't have any questions. I was going to address them.
Okay.
Jump into it.
Elaine, this is me, I think. And maybe we are going one after another, maybe one bullet at a time.
Yeah, yeah.
The information I was looking for, in addition to what Stacy has done, awesome job of presenting all the dollars and everything, and yourself, as well as Christine, I was looking for, since this is a public workshop, you know, how our service levels went down from six minutes committed police response time to 13 minutes right now. So I I was looking for, besides the financial details, those were, you know, put into one slide, slide 34 or so, you know, police needs 28 people and all those. I get it, but giving the the groundwork. I get it, but giving the groundwork to how our service levels went down because of the staff constraints and financial difficulties and all those. It helps me personally, of course, public as well. It's not only the police. I'm taking fire, you know, how, why the overtime is going up because of the, you know, lack of firefighters. And how our, how beautiful the other town parks are, Robert Goss is, I'm sure he's still listening, Branch Cordova, of course, they have a sales tax measures and all those. How our parks are looking at, despite Lauren's extreme hard work from her staff because of lack of enough funding. And of course, some of those parking permits we are putting, you know, I usually hear takes a little bit more time in Folsom than other places. Maybe Pam Johnson's department is struggling. So that's what I was looking, you know, in addition to, and I don't think so, that comes under a past bullet or you can put it as a karma, what I'm looking in addition to what this, your team presented today.
Why, I'm gonna jump in here because YK's on, first of all, I think it's incorrect to say that service levels have decreased. And, and what you were referring to in the police department are actually response times. That's not service levels. And response times, we, there's no such thing as a six-minute guarantee. If you call the police, you get prioritized based on what you're calling them for. And the response times are what the response times are. We don't set a number and that says, if you call us to tell us that there's a dog barking, we're gonna have a police officer at your house in six minutes. That's not how that works. So response times with, with police and fire are not the same thing as levels of service. Because I don't know that there is any evidence that the levels of service in Folsom have decreased. We can, the whole conversation about whether or not response times have increased needs to be a much more detailed discussion because we need to look at who's got a response time of six minutes versus who's got a response time of two minutes versus who's got 25 minutes? And what those calls were actually about. So that's, that's two completely different things. And the objective here is financial. So we need to, the first thing that we need to be looking at is what recommendations do we have for staff as to how we go about resolving this financial issue? And all of the rest of what you were talking about honestly is something that probably should be considered in a strategic planning session. Or just direct conversations with both the police and fire chiefs in order to get the detail that I think you're looking for relative to the question about response times.
And Councilmember Chalant, Chairless, could I clarify if your, if your question is, have they, have they already, that you believe they've already declined? And you want to see what that difference is? Or are you wanting to understand if we don't make this like $20 million per year, you know, what we really need to be doing kind of staff investment? How that affects those kind of metrics? Or is it both? Like what are you, what, could you provide a little more specificity what you're looking for?
What I'm looking for, third bullet, we are going to go to the community engagement process on what? So in order to go on what, I'm still, you know, vague at this point after three hours spending here, of course, forgive me, I'm only 12 months in the council. I don't have a longer, you know, duration to catch up, but still I'm trying my best. So what are we trying to go to them? And the options we have given right now is, you know, next month it is going to be 14, $14,000 deficit. The following year is $650,000 deficit, one point. So it's increasing. And if, we are only talking on that little piece of 600 to 1.5 to 2.5, let's hit on that one. Or since the, since the, you know, since the great pandemic, the resources were, went down, they're still servicing, we are going it. That's another thing. And the third one is our sales tax revenues has been declined. How are we, you know, what are the other efforts through the economic development to bring it back? So we do, I know, I was listening, all those stops, you know, that's why I was, you know, paying attention to the end. Looking at the first point, what information we are looking for is more meat and potato.
Can I comment here just for a second? And maybe this, this will be helpful to frame everybody's thoughts going forward. Maybe not. I think there's really just three things that we are considering is we are trying to either increase the rate at which our existing revenue streams go up. We, or we are trying to raise new revenue from other sources. Or we are trying to make changes to our services that reduce cost. Okay? That's our only three paths forward. And for me, this exercise today has exposed once again that the solution is kind of like playing, you know, the improv game where it's yes and, and we have to go down all three channels concurrently, right? Economic development grows the pie so that the existing revenue streams get bigger faster. The tax measure would be one that would add revenue to the, to the streams that we have existing. And taking a careful look at what people's expectations are and what services we're providing clearly is something that we should be doing periodically. So I endorse fully going down all three paths concurrently. And the master planning effort or the, excuse me, strategic planning effort should go in parallel because to the point that was made earlier by, by Mr. Klein, we have to be able to have a good context and good explanation for what we are doing. And then what we are going to do if we ask the voters for new revenue. But we are under some time pressure, which has not been discussed. If we are to consider a sales tax measure, that consideration has to be taken up this spring because it is not practical to do a tax measure in an odd number a year. So if we're gonna take it up in November on the ballots, we have to have everything in place to be able to explain clearly to people what it is that we're asking for and why by sometime this summer. So my answer to all of these questions is I don't have more questions right now. Yes, we should absolutely do strategic planning and we have to go forward with planning for a, for a tax measure at this point. So that's the totality of my comments and hopefully that sort of can focus the, the closing part of this discussion a little bit.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
I just want to add what Mike added. I agree on the sales tax measure increase. And we were consistently telling in this, I think even I asked the question, 40% is not being outsiders are paying, not the Folsom. We do have other options, property tax, 100% Folsom residents are going to put it. So maybe making those clarity of impact, it's only 60% impact on Folsom residents, remaining 40% is coming from outside. It's not just the sales tax. I know, bringing those clarity for the community is important as well. More, more options for them. I just want to add what Mike said.
Thank you, Councilmember Chalant, Chairless. So are you comfortable, you know, I guess I'm polling on, you know, that are you comfortable with us? I think I heard from Councilmember Kozlowski, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that you're comfortable with moving ahead with the community engagement process? And you'd like us to continue the strategic planning process? Councilmember Chalant, Chairless, are you saying you're comfortable with moving ahead with the community engagement process?
Again, what exactly are we going to, I know, that's where I think maybe someone has to help me if I'm not following through this conversation. What exactly we will be asking community? Before I get there, the third bullet on the first bullet, I know we talked about, Mike explained very well, the, the sales tax measure. There is no way we can cut more. Yep, I'm loud and clear on that one, based on that. What other options, you know, for cities like us comparing the, throughout the nation? I think I did mention that before also to you, Elaine. Are there any other, you know, innovative thoughts, you know, based on your research popped up for a city like us where probably we can consider for some sort of revenue generation?
Okay, so, okay, I, so maybe at this point it's best to just go question by question so that we're really clear. So.
Elaine, how about we see what Rosario has to say and then we'll try, we'll try to summarize it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez, do you have any comments?
Um, no, I think the first two I, I kind of commented on. Third one, sure. Yeah.
Okay, good. All right.
So to summarize what I think I heard, there may be some additional information that individual council members want to look at, some of which relates to this and some of which I don't think does. I don't see any other options. I appreciate YK's suggestion that we look at other ways of generating revenue, but I'm pretty sure that was done prior to putting together this presentation. So I agree with Mike that it needs to be a combination of economic development, moving forward with the sales tax measure. And I think we may already be behind where I would have liked to be, given that we wanted, that we need to do this this year. Because I don't, I don't see waiting till 2024 as, as being wise. So I think we need to get the community involved. So we move forward on, on most of the fronts that were included in Christine's recommendations. And that we include the community in that strategic planning process because some of this money is what is, is the only source of funds for moving forward with those items that both, that both Bruce and Robert Goss talked about. And having sat through those previous strategic planning sessions, it's a good idea and it's a good way to get all of my colleagues, hopefully, on the same page because we have to be the head cheerleaders for all of this to get the community to support it. Because I, I agree with Bruce. If we're pushing a big rock up a big hill, because Folsom historically has not been a supporter of sales tax increases. And I don't see any way out of this without us doing it. I've never been a big supporter because I didn't think it would pass in Folsom, but I'm happy to be the head cheerleader on this issue. And I hope that my colleagues all agree with me on it.
So Carrie, just for clarification, I'm not fully sold on it, but I will, I'm interested to hear what the community has to say. So I just, for clarification.
Yeah.
Okay, but we need to, we need to move forward with this and get community input.
That's fine. That's what I just.
Immediately.
Yeah.
Because we've only got till early summer to put this on the ballot.
Yeah, just, just for city manager perspective, I want to be clear, I am, was not looking to poll everyone of where you stand on sales tax initiatives. I'm literally saying, could we please reach out to the community and say, we want to describe the problem to you. We want to, you want to understand what you value and how you prioritize our services. We want to know how you feel about, you know, cutting certain services. We want to understand how you feel about raising certain fees. We would like to test how you feel about a sales tax measure, half cent, full cent. Does, is the runway too short for 2022? You know, it's that, that's the kind of thing that we, and then test some economic development concepts as well, honestly. Everything that Robert in particular listed, I'm sitting here like, yes, I'm in, but there's no funding source. So that's, that's why we're, you know, hoping to have that type of conversation with our community to understand it. I did want to ask Councilmember Aquino if, if she had any comments or input.
I do, thank you. And I guess I'll be the devil's advocate a little bit. Of course, we want public engagement, but I do, it can't just be here, here's the problem. I do think we need to present a vision and I'm not sure that we're prepared to do that yet. I don't know that there's enough time between now and November to do that yet. So I'm a little bit concerned about going out prematurely. As, as far as the economic development piece, I wanted to just, if I could make a suggestion, I think the Parks and Rec Commission does a really excellent job of using committees to kind of study some things more in depth. And I think the council could do that. And what I would like to suggest is that we, three committees come to my mind, made up of, you know, two council members, either Parks and Rec or Planning Commission, depending on the committee, city staff, Joe Galliardi and some select members from the Folsom Economic Development Corporation Board. But I'd like to see a committee that identifies either unutilized or underutilized city properties, and you know, this was kind of alluded to, and, and how we could possibly activate those as, as revenue generators. The second one was mentioned in one of Christine's slides about retail slash commercial recruitment. And so maybe we have a committee that focuses on that. And the third thing, I really think that we need to look at, especially as the zoning code update is going to come to us. But we all know that there's economics that, that go with land use planning. And I've been reading a lot about how there's a particular firm that, that you can hire that does these studies, kind of these 3D studies, where it shows basically where you're getting your biggest bang for your buck. And it always works out that the things around the urban area, those give you the most bang for your buck. And so this idea of putting housing in the central business district and making it more walkable, all that sort of stuff should, should provide a return on investment for the city. So that's the other thing I would like to look at is maybe some kind of consultant that helps us with the economics of land use planning. So that as we go into this zoning code update, we make sure that what we're adopting helps with those.
Yeah.
Economic challenges.
Right. Okay, so like three, three subcommittees essentially.
Yeah.
All right. How does the rest of the council feel about, is there a, you know, is there a consensus in terms of moving into a subcommittee approach for, on those items?
My, my only concern about that is that we don't have the time to do that. I think we need to, we need to move forward and decide if we're gonna try to move forward with the sales tax or not. It's, it's February, it's the middle of February.
Well, I mean, like Mike was saying, all this could be done concurrently, but also, you know, let's just say for the sake of argument that we're gonna put a sales tax measure on the ballot. The other thing you have to consider is, does it have a better chance of winning in a presidential election year versus a non-presidential? I mean, it's not a foregone conclusion that 2022 would be the best timing.
That's part of what we would anticipate polling for, Councilmember Aquino, is do we need a longer runway? You know, is 24 more viable than 22, for example, that would be among, you know, the questions to be posing or getting a feel for timing. Because you're right, you know, we don't know.
So I guess to answer your question, Madam Mayor, I mean, okay, fine. So we, I may have some trepidation about doing the community engagement before this thing's fully baked. But so yes, you could go ahead, but I think we could do the other things at the same time.
I think maybe I wasn't clear. I think that we need to do the community engagement as part of the baking project, process. I don't want to bake it and then get input after the fact. I want to get the community's input before we decide how we're gonna, whether or not we're gonna move forward.
Okay. So, so is everybody comfortable? It sounds like everybody's comfortable with moving ahead with the community engagement process? And then reporting that back to council in terms of our findings and then that will inform next steps?
I don't, I don't know that it's, I think the council needs to be involved in the process. I think there needs to be, in addition to the electronic outreach, I think that we need to have, set up another community forum or call it whatever you want. And I think we need to do something in the short term and ideally in person to get people to, to come and provide some input. I just don't, I don't know when the county's order is gonna expire.
Yeah, so I, I am, I am hearing that they expect their order to expire in terms of the ban of virtual meetings on February 16th. So I think we are now able to have the February 22nd meeting in person, just verifying, you know, that that's indeed correct. So your February 22nd meeting could be in person.
Hey, Madam Mayor, just, just a thought to kind of pile, to, I guess, support what Sarah, Ms. Aquino said with regard to the committees. When we were last year kicking around what to do, how to get some action on the parking issue in the historic district, Rosario, you know, made some good progress with a whole bunch of stakeholders by having a, having a, you know, an ad hoc meeting of her own, basically. And then parallel to that, YK and I had a community meeting where it was just the two of us and made some additional progress on those topics. And we were able to, you know, collectively, we ended up with a pretty, you know, solid proposal coming back to the council from the community, right? So I think there is some merit. So I think there is some merit to what Sarah said in terms of kind of chopping this up into a little bit smaller chunks and having a series of community meetings instead of, you know, high stakes, singular ones. It's, you know, it's the old many hands make light work thing, right? We can, we can spread out and cover more territory that way and do it as public meetings if we need to, or smaller sessions.
I'm definitely a big fan of the subcommittees.
Okay.
I guess I'm volunteering for one more job.
One of those committees. Yeah, good. Maybe I'm going to invest more time to understand. I know even Mayor Howell said, you know, service levels didn't go down in Folsom. In fact, they went up. Let's, you know, what we hear when we walk on the streets is different from what I'm hearing here. But again, I respect my colleagues' statements as well. As long as we are clear on the third item, what are we trying to ask them for a sales tax? I know, sales tax increase is one of the questions, like many questions, I believe.
Right. It's intended to help them, help us prioritize what's meaningful to them, both in terms of services and solutions. And that, that would be the gist of engaging on the process.
Yeah. And, and the numbers I was pulling out, you know, just from the common consensus, talking to the, you know, this person, that person. If I'm totally wrong, that no one committed six minutes of the, you know, response time, or I'm talking average. It's not the dog bite to a theft to a life-threatening cop. That's not what I'm saying. I'm talking in general. Sixty thousand calls, I'm just making up the number, sixty thousand calls is being received from the, you know, our dispatchers. And how well are we, that's what my meaning, based on the growing needs on the town. I know, that's why I ask again, our Stacy also on the south side of the tax collection definitely should be much higher. And that revenue definitely helps, you know, argumenting more staff. Those, that, that's the information I'm looking at. When I talk to the, you know, the third bullet to the residents, I should be in a position to answer all those questions to them. So hopefully, maybe these subcommittees may be, you know, giving us more information. Because when the email goes out or the flyer goes out to the community, when people like me is walking around in the community, questions comes, it looks ashamed if I don't know the answers. A case for a common things. So that's my point, Elaine, and my colleagues, and I'm open for next level.
Okay, and so if you are interested in this ad hoc committee process, then we as staff will bring to your February twenty-second meeting a series of resolutions where you would appoint the members of those ad hoc committees. And that would be the next step. And then in tandem with that, we would be moving ahead with activating the community engagement process. Is, is that reasonable?
Well, just to consolidate that a little bit.
Yeah.
Yes, I think we should have a further discussion about the ad hoc committees at the February twenty-second meeting. And I would also, and we're talking about the daytime meeting, correct?
We don't have a daytime meeting until for February twenty-second. On March eighth, you have a one P M scheduled. I don't know how scheduled.
Okay, so, so let's, let's put the ad hoc committees on the, the second, the second February meeting.
Right.
And, but I'd like to, I don't know what the original focus was going to be for the, the early March daytime meeting. But I'd like to add, getting the community input that we, that I think we desperately need to get to encourage the public to attend that meeting so that we can get this process started sooner rather than later.
Yeah.
My colleagues are, are in agreement with that.
Yeah, so March, yeah, so March eighth could be, you know, really, really targeted and specific to trying to elicit that community input as we're doing our greater effort with polling and other, and using other methods.
Right. And I think the early part of that meeting needs to be a very brief summary of the financial issues that were presented to us in detail today, only to save time, I mean, because it's now after four o'clock. And I think that that's a huge amount of information that we don't necessarily need to go into the details on. I think we could just summarize what we talked about today. And say, so this is, this is where we are, the, these are the problems that we're trying to solve. This is how much money we think that we could generate if we were to move forward with the sales tax measure. What would you guys like to see included in that? And get input from the community to see if that, that's something that the members of the public that attend that meeting are even interested in.
Okay, I think that that's, that's a good call, that, that you're comfortable with that being a piece of the larger process that we can move ahead with, you know, these other.
Yes, yes.
So we're going ahead with all that. And then we're also on March eighth saying, here's an opportunity to come in person and talk to us. Okay, gotcha. Good. Okay.
Do my colleagues agree with that?
Yes, but can I just, just reiterate, to beat a dead horse? The part of what we're asking the public needs to be, what is your vision for Folsom? What, what do we want it to look like fifty years from now that we need to start doing now? It can't just be, we don't have enough money for this, 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 and this, right? It's just, just like what we would do at our house, right? Maybe you don't have the money right now, but you still have a plan to put in a swimming pool and an outdoor kitchen and a whatever. And, and you know that that's the long-term goal and you're gonna chip away at it.
But I think we need to, we need to present where we are now and then explain that in the terms that, that, that you put it in, Sarah. You know, that we have, we have a short-term problem or that could turn into a longer-term problem. But so what is it that you want to see moving forward? And we kind of attempt to address both issues at the same time.
Yeah, and, and I will add, you know, that you, as a, as a body, the council did recently update or provide a, you know, adopted and updated general plan that involved, you know, very robust, comprehensive public input that touched on most of this, honestly, in terms of kind of the vision for the future of the city. So some of that could be, you know, sharing or reminding what's, what's in that, you know, great document. And because that is the product, that is, that has a large community voice that's embedded within it, so.
And all realities, vision could be a meeting in itself.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
It's that big.
I agree. I absolutely agree. Yeah. Okay, well, I think that as your city manager, I, I'm clear on where you'd like to head. Is there anything else anyone would like to add?
Any of my colleagues have anything else they want to add?
No.
Okay, then that concludes my staff presentation, Mayor.
All right, thank you, everyone. And we will be adjourn, readjourning for the closed session. I have my other packet in front of me. What time, Elaine?
So if you could please join the regular session link, not the closed session link, just a little bit before six fifteen, and then we will adjourn to the closed session link for closed session. But first, join the regular, the same link you use to join now, please do, rejoin that at about six ten.
And this, it's in the same email from Krista?
The one that's your, where you're a panelist, yes, that same Zoom panelist.
Okay.
Just exactly how you got onto this meeting.
So go back to the same email from Krista? Okay.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Bye-bye.